Good evening Vacaville, this is the regularly scheduled city council meeting for August 8th, 2023. And with that, can I have a roll call?
Council agency authority members Stockton, Richie, Silva, Chapman, Roberts, Vice Mayor Vice Chair Wiley, Mayor Chair Carley.
Here. Will you please rise with me for the pledge of allegiance? Councilmember Richie, would you like to lead us?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the public, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. City Manager, do we have any changes to tonight's agenda?
No, we do not.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion approved agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
And with that, I just want to make an announcement that tonight's council meeting will be adjourned in memory of Sue Augustine, who passed away. And for those of us in the community who have known Mayor Lynn Augustine and all his involvement over the years, she will be missed. And so, second, all in favor?
Aye.
And with that, I see no presentations tonight, and we will move on to the consent calendar, item six. Anyone wishing to pull an item from the consent calendar, whether it's the council or the public? Seeing none, do I have a motion? We have a motion?
My second.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We will move on to business from the floor. This is a time when the public may approach the council on items not on tonight's agenda, but is within the jurisdiction of the city and the city council. Please come forward.
Hello Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. Thank you for your service to our community and for sticking it out through these tough meetings. While your work on the council is appreciated, I was deeply disappointed when I saw the recordings of public comments during the recent city council meetings. As elected, you are required to give every community member an opportunity to voice their opinion. You're not expected to tolerate hate speech. You are not required to tolerate disparaging speech. Much of what I heard in the last meeting qualified as hate speech. Sexual preference and gender orientation are protected classes both federally and at the state level. And hate speech is legally defined as any form of expression through which speakers intend to vilify, humiliate, or incite hatred against a group or class of persons, including sexual orientation and gender identity. The Brown Act allows you to maintain decorum in the chambers. This is so that every citizen feels safe and welcome to participate in their representative democracy. By allowing people to make false statements that degrade and vilify members of our community, that you are elected to also represent you are not following the Brown Act by ensuring that the public can easily participate in the meeting. Mayor Carley, it is your explicit role as mayor to facilitate the meeting. This includes moderating the tone of the meeting, so that all participants feel safe and comfortable to participate in the proceedings. You have a gavel, you have control of the mic, and you can stop the meeting at any time to consult with the city attorneys about what constitutes hate speech. I expect that to be more closely guarded going forward. I'm also here to remind anybody that needs to hear that the city cannot structure city policies around religious-based opinions or enact any policy that favors one religion over another religion, or that favors it over the absence of religion. The people here tonight sharing their opinions about how their faith relates to this topic are absolutely entitled to do so. I respect and vehemently protect their ability to do that, but no decisions can be made based on that. Your faith also should not be influencing decisions that are made for city policies. Any policy you vote for should reflect our city's goal to promote equity and inclusion, not the opinions of a religion that most people in Vacaville do not follow. To be very clear, as elected representatives, I want you to advocate and vote for implementation of a flag policy that reflects the values of our city's strategic plan, which states in goal five that our city goal is to promote community engagement and increased equity and inclusion. I would like you to vote for a flag policy that allows the pride flag to be flown in Vacaville throughout the month of June. As your constituent, I expect you to advocate and vote for an updated proclamation policy that issues proclamations by a simple majority vote of council. I expect that the policy language will include support for the LGBTQIA+ community, as well as other diverse groups within our community.
Thank you.
It's not, is that three minutes?
It's three minutes.
Thank you.
And before the next speaker comes forward, let me just explain a few things like I did at the last meeting, and then you'll be able to come forward. So just give me a minute. This obviously is a sensitive topic to the community and to the council and to the city, which is why two council meetings ago, a member of the council asked to agendize both the policy for the proclamation and also a policy for the flag. And with that, the council unanimously voted that we would agendize this. And that what that means is we direct staff to do research, put it on to a regularly scheduled council meeting in the future that can be agendized and noticed so that the public has a chance to speak up and speak out. And again, like I also shared at the last meeting, this is your three minutes, and you're entitled to it. And to be fair to everyone, I will ask that you limit it to three minutes and share with us what you want us to hear. It's always better to not try to repeat what everyone else might be saying, although it's your prerogative if you choose to. It's just in the interest of trying to help us understand your position. This is the conduct that we will have. It's the same discussion that we had last time. So really appreciate that all of you are coming out tonight, just like you were two weeks ago. I also shared that it will be likely that this will come back to the council in September or October. And so it's a window of time for us to prepare for this. And so this is not necessarily who speaks last or loudest. It's also, the decorum is not a time to cheer or jeer opinions that you either support or oppose. It's your time. So with that, please come forward and share.
Good afternoon. My name is James Jay Jr., and I want to talk to you, or I want to thank you for letting me speak here today. I'm here to talk about pride and how people of the LGBTQIA+ community should be treated the same as everyone else, like it says so in our constitution. I heard what was said in the last council meeting about how gay people were influencing kids, and I want to tell you that it just isn't true. In June at Pride in the Park, I saw a drag queen show, and I saw the flag as well, and it didn't make me gay or like, or not want to be a guy or anything. So I saw it as an entertainment purpose, or just as people going out there and having fun, and just trying to live life the way they want to. Thank you for your time, and I hope you leave, I also hope that you will leave the flag up in June as well.
Thank you.
There you go. Good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council members and city staff. Many of you know me already, Mary Vasquez. I come to you tonight as a concerned resident. I also come to you tonight as a concerned ally and accomplice to our LGBTQIA+ community here in Vacaville. I watched the July 25th city council meeting and listened to, unfortunately, a lot of hateful homophobic, transphobic, and vile comments about our LGBTQIA+ community from other members of Vacaville. I wish to remind you all that this is hate speech, hate speech that is targeted at a specific group in our community and should not be tolerated. Not only is this hate speech, but it's also a distraction, distraction from a very small minority in Vacaville. It's a distraction for you all and the important work that you all are doing and need to be doing for the city of Vacaville. It is also a distraction for those of us who are working proactively to make positive change here in Vacaville, like Vacaville People's Forum, Northern Solano Dems, and the Solano Pride Center, just to name a few of us who are here tonight. But more importantly, this type of hateful rhetoric is dangerous for our LGBTQIA+ community, and giving this a platform could potentially be dangerous to our most vulnerable populations in Vacaville. It is also unfortunately strategic, intentional, and fear mongering at its best. And it moves us backwards as a community, not forward. I ask that you all denounce and condemn this ugly rhetoric and affirm that we will not tolerate hate speech like this in Vacaville. Some of you all have shown previously your support and of the LGBTQIA+ community through your actions and support of the pride flag and previous pride proclamations and the pride event held at Andrews Park for the past three years. When you consider a flag and proclamation policy, please consider policies that are inclusive of Vacaville's diversity. I hope that the future of our flag policy is one that is inclusive and of commemorative flags, and also continues to honor Pride Month, as well as honoring other national cultural months in the future. Again, we should not move backwards, and we should stand with precedent. We should be a town that is proud and honors and celebrates everyone who lives here. I also hope that as you consider a future proclamation policy, that is one that is not solely in the hands of the mayor to execute, but that a proclamation can be presented by any council member and must also be ratified by council. Future proclamations should be drafted by a collective of the council and possibly consult constituents and represent the diversity of Vacaville. Because we see you, Mayor Carley, the pride proclamation this year was minimalist at best, and barely acknowledged Pride Month and the contributions of the LGBTQIA+ community in Vacaville, and looked eerily similar to the 2018 proclamation. Again, let's move Vacaville forward, not backwards. The efforts of inclusivity within policies?
Thank you.
I'll email you. Thank you.
You can always email, yes. Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for serving our community. My name is Peggy Rollins. I've made Vacaville my home for the last 30-plus years, raised my family, worked, volunteered, supported the local businesses. I am a Christian who believes in the separation of church and state. And I also suspect that everyone in this room, and even in the community, holds one thing in common. We all like to be valued. And so I appreciate your flying the pride flag. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening Mayor Carley and council members. My name's Karen Nolan. I've lived in Vacaville more than 30 years. I'm here to respond to the rhetoric by those who purported to represent the Christian community while complaining about June's pride proclamation and the display of the rainbow flag. I want to make clear that they do not speak for all Christians, in Vacaville, much less than other residents. I am a lifelong Christian. I currently serve on the Episcopal Diocese of Northern California's Commission for Intercultural Ministry and on its Rainbow Ministry Team. I am a member of Church of the Epiphany, which has been in Vacaville since 1895. My church has happily participated in all three pride celebrations in Vacaville's Andrews Park, and it's a wonderful event that the city should be very proud to host here. I personally was pleased to be in Andrews Park on June 7th, 2019, to witness the first public presentation of a pride proclamation by the Vacaville City Council. I'm delighted that similar proclamations have been issued every year since then, and I love seeing the pride flag displayed in downtown in June. I think the city should fly more flags and banners there, particularly those that symbolize support for members of our community who have not always felt welcome or safe here. I believe in separation of church and state, so I don't expect this council to be particularly swayed by Christian doctrine when it comes to deciding who deserves a proclamation or a flag and who doesn't. But if you feel the need to follow such a doctrine, I would encourage you to take a page from my denomination. For more than 55 years, Episcopal churches have put up a sign that reflects our belief that God loves everyone, no exceptions. That sign simply says, "The Episcopal Church welcomes you." The city of Vacaville should do the same.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to thank the council for hosting this meeting and opening up space for normal folks like myself to host dialogue with you guys. My name is Frank Nelstone. My family and I are residents in the Allendale area and have been for past three generations. I'm here today with the intention of sparking some dialogue on the topic of adding Vacaville's cannabis business program to the future council agendas to ultimately move forward with this development. Over the last decade, I've been a senior systems and infrastructure engineer, tasked with developing multiple IT teams and data systems for many companies in the tech field. Over my career, one thing I've learned is how to effectively research and parse data to find analytics, trends, key metrics, and more regarding any given topic. One day I was researching data on different industries' impact, and I came across something very interesting that stood out to me. And it eventually led me to find tons of data and information explaining that the cannabis industry, both nationally and statewide, is showing growth in numbers unlike any industry we've ever seen before here in America. Very similar to the tech industry, actually, but even more than the alcohol industry during its height in the post-prohibition era. With its rapid increase in industry expansion, legislation, profit potential, and profit potential, many neighboring cities and jurisdictions have already taken advantage of this opportunity with the cannabis industry and have been greatly benefiting from this since then. We believe an industry with such potential as this should also be utilized and explored in depth here in Vacaville, finding harmony in which to benefit the consumer, the public, and the city of Vacaville. If the council would be so kind, I'd like to ask, is there anything in particular that's holding back the council decision on proceeding further with the development of the cannabis business program here in Vacaville? And if there are any immediate concerns from the members of the council, would you guys be open to voicing said concerns and exploring some resolutions that can allow us to fulfill them?
Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Deborah Murky, and if it matters, I've lived in Vacaville since 1957, and I've watched it grow as I grew. Over the past week, I watched the video of the city council meetings in which several people spoke against the council resolution honoring great gay pride and the flying, excuse me, flying of the rainbow flag. Several speakers made blanket statements implying that all Christians are against the flying of that flag. A friend's response when I told her that was, "How dare they speak for us. They're giving Christianity a bad name." While the previous speakers are certainly entitled to their opinion, I am here tonight to state that I am a Christian and active Lutheran church member, and I am proud that my city flew the flag. Any gesture of inclusiveness that will make members of the LGBTQIA+ community feel welcome in Vacaville is fine with me. Other speakers stated that the council should stick to your lane and avoid any topic that divides rather than unifies the residents. Many of your actions caused division among the residents. I can't think of a project that has come before you where the neighbors did not come out and voice their concerns about traffic, noise, loss of review, just a general change. It seems, okay, making residents of Vacaville feel welcome is, in my opinion, your lane. Please stand by your principles, make the decisions that you feel are the best for the community, and don't allow the squeaky wheel to make decisions for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Meiling Albert. Actually, I agree with everything that was already said, but that's not why I'm up here. Absolutely. Separation of church and state, the embracing of all beings, whatever they embrace, if it's not harming anybody. But as I said, I'm not here to speak about that. First of all, I lived in Vacaville for 28 years, and right now I'm living with my partner in Fairfield in the Green Valley area. And I'm here to talk about MCE, which I heard was kind of discussed and contested, I don't know at what city council meeting, but recently. And I'm concerned about what people think is wrong with it, or why it might be something that people are afraid of. In Fairfield and Green Valley, we have MCE. I love it. It's like you're using renewable resources for electricity in your homes. It's negligible what you're paying for that. They're working with PG&E, the service comes through the PG&E lines. There seems to be some controversy over opting in and opting out. And people saying, "We want the choice. We don't want to be opted in, you know, just having to be opted in, and then we have to opt out." The thing is, that it can't be any other way. If it's coming through PG&E lines, everybody's going to get the renewable resources, energy that's coming through renewable resources, everybody. And if you want to opt out later or soon, you can do that. And you're still going to be receiving that energy, which is the direction we want to go in our country and in California, is to use more and more renewable energies. And even if PG&E is trying to move towards renewable energy, they're not doing it very quickly. And MCE, if you have solar panels on your home, actually gives you more credit for the use of your own solar energy than PG&E would. I want you to really reconsider this thing. Also, I've heard that, oh, certain council members say, "Oh, we want to go our own way."
Thank you.
Am I did it?
Yes.
Oh, yeah?
Yes.
Darn.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. Thank you for sharing.
Hi, my name is Emily Bright. I'm here today to address the hateful comments that were directed towards the LGBTQ community at the July 25th city council meeting and the council's response to these comments. I want to begin by thanking the city for ultimately opting to make a Pride Month proclamation and fly the flag. Mayor Carley said on the 25th that "community is what defines us," and the council's enthusiasm for the upcoming National Night, then upcoming National Night Out lent credence to that belief. I'd like to take this opportunity to share my National Night Out experience. My wife and I were already downtown for a date, and we often walked through Andrews afterwards, noticing the event additionally drew our interest before considering that my appearance that night my appearance that night made my identity as a trans woman easy to notice. Given the temperature of the city council meeting, the fact that flying the Pride flag was an issue to begin with, and a myriad of prior experiences in Vacaville that exceed the scope of these three minutes, it became clear that being visibly trans at this sort of community event wasn't likely to end in a positive experience. So we left. Being visibly queer in Vacaville, I consider a night out a success if I only get one or two people having an uncomfortably fixated stare with regards to my appearance. In Vacaville, I risk confrontation every time I need to use the restroom in public and experience a consistent vigilance regarding my interactions with this community. For me, National Night Out is less of an opportunity to interact with my neighbors and more akin to social Russian roulette. That said, I'd like to thank Jeanette Wiley for pushing back on the complation of LGBTQ identities with sexual predation. Your clear opposition to this rhetoric was heard and appreciated. More pushback from the council broadly would have been welcome, given the volume and strikingly hateful nature of the public comments. That said, Wiley's pushback was followed with an appreciation that comments were largely focused on the flag and not people. I want to challenge the council to push beyond this framing. This, as well as the commentists' false appeals to unity and professions of having nothing but love for LGBTQ people, act as moral laundering for hate speech. This rhetoric cultivates in American culture, where 80% of trans adults have considered suicide and 40% have attempted it per the Williams Institute at UCLA. I won't follow these harrowing statistics with appeals to the value of transgender life, because if you don't already believe in that, I won't convince you in three minutes. Towards the end of the night, Mayor Carley said that he wants Vacaville to be a place where young people want to stay, and I'm at the stage of my life where I really desire to put down roots in a community and embed myself in it. The city's proclamation and choice to fly the Pride flag were nice gestures but required the application of pressure. Furthermore, they do little to address the hatred permeating this community. While you obviously cannot change that hatred of your own accord, I do challenge you to lead by example in your rhetoric and responses to public comment. Given the extreme nature of many comments given, that only a single council member voiced opposition is concerning. Multiple comments made that night insisted the city stepped out of their role in providing public safety with the proclamation, and I invite each council member to reflect on what it would take for queer people to feel safe in public. If I have time, I'd also like to endorse Greg Ritchie's suggestions to further discuss structured opportunities for dog owners to use their parks for dogs off-leash. As a runner, being chased by off-leash dogs is like a monthly occurrence for me, and I'd really love it if I could refer to these owners to specific places and times to do so instead of being chased all the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Carley, Vice Mayor Wiley, and council members. My name is Donna Harris, and I'm going to get a little personal, because you've heard a lot about the LGBTQ community. I'm one. I was raised as a devout Christian to believe that all people are the children of God, who loves each of us unconditionally. I married a man, gave birth to four children, raised them as Christians, and contributed to their children's Christianity and that of my great-grandchild. The last 25 years of my 36-year marriage, I suffered, and I drank heavily. My secret. Because I secretly knew I was lesbian, but I kept my Christian vows. When my children started their own families, I amicably divorced my husband and eventually met and married the most wonderful woman I have ever known. She was also a devout Christian until she died last year. These were the happiest 16 years of my life. I have been hearing a lot of false, ignorant, vile rhetoric about the LGBTQ community, including here last month. LGBTQIA are a cult of Ashdi? That's comparable to saying that all people who own cats are worshippers of Bastet of Egypt, Egypt. I believe Jesus, when he told us, his disciples, in John 14 that there are many mansions in his father's house. There are some here who would have you believe that God only loves those who believe in God the way they choose to believe it, and they can quote sections of scripture to support their views. They would have you believe that only those who believe as they themselves do will be able to live in those mansions. They alone have the right to identify themselves and their addresses with pride and with flags. Evidently, those of us who believe otherwise, if we make it to heaven at all, will be relegated to the slum areas with no addresses, only shame, not pride, and no flags. I am a woman. That is not my religion nor my culture. It is who I am. I am white. That is not my religion or culture. It is who I am. I am Christian. That is my religion and who I am. I am LGBTQIA. That is my culture and who I am. I'm not suggesting you raise a women's flag or a white flag, because they are not cultures. And Christianity is an umbrella religion, which is supposed to be separate from government, so I'm not asking you to raise any sort of Christian flag either. I'm requesting that you codify raising the LGBTQIA flag, because that is a culture, one whose members are maligned, beaten, and killed by self-righteous, privileged Christians who want only themselves in God's mansions and on our flagpoles. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Greg Davidson, longtime resident of Vacaville, pastor of Trinity Baptist Church. And I want to begin by sharing with all my friends here that I love the homosexual community. The Bible says that we are all created in God's image and that we have great value. And, you know, I think about when I worked at UPS, and we had two lesbians that worked next to me on the Belt, and we had two Teamsters that were harassing them, disgracing them, devaluing them as human beings. They were larger than I was. I probably didn't think it through, but I'm glad I didn't. And I stood between them and those two lesbian girls, and I said, "If you say one more degrading comment, you're going to have to go through me." That day, I backed them down. That day, I won two friends. And that day, we became friends for many, many years. I love the LGBTQ community. It breaks my heart that anyone would devalue another human being, disgrace them in any way. And I never forget, you know, several years ago, when we had this same situation, and the head of the LGBTQ came to see me after this meeting. And we had coffee, and he said, "Well, I guess you're wondering why I'm here." And I said, "I really am," especially after the meeting we had and some of the heated rhetoric. And he said, "I came to apologize." He said, "We said mean things about you, and you were so nice to us." You know, when we gave out water before this meeting, and we handed it to our friends who don't agree with us, and we told them that we loved them. There was no hate in that. We love the LGBT community. Now, as a pastor, I have a very different solution. And I believe that my heart is that I want every person to live a full, wonderful life. And I believe that we have the answer for that. But that's my goal and my heart. And we can disagree, but in Vacaville, we can disagree in love and have different opinions. We don't have to accuse each other and put each other down. And I was so thankful for that conversation that began a multi-year friendship with my friend, who was leader of the LGBTQ. But I want to say today that as government leaders, you can tell you have no business involving yourself in proclamations that divide well-meaning people in this community. There's no hateful people in this room. There's only well-meaning people. And based on that, we need to promote flags and proclamations that unite us, not divide us. We love each other. We get along in this community. And I will defend anybody who is devalued and disgraced in any way, and so will the Christian community. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you.
Kristy Ambrose, military spouse. Last time I came here, I expressed that my son went through a very unfortunate sexual event with another little boy. I was a little nervous, so I didn't share a lot of the details with you, but after I spoke to my son, he expressed to me that a lot of the kids in his school were also practicing in some of these activities, like they were doing it to each other and hiding off and stuff. And I did express this to the school. I told the school immediately when my son told me. I don't believe that every child is mature enough to handle some of the things involving the sexualities of our lives that we get to see. We, as adults, we can handle a lot of stuff. Like, if we see a flag and we see somebody, you know, wearing a rainbow or whatever, we can respect it. That's their life choice. However, children are doing things like walking and writing love letters at seven years old, saying, "I want to be your lesbian lover." I've had families tell me stuff like this. I've had soldiers express this to me, like they believe that this should not be a part of our government and flash in front of our kids' faces. Not every child is going to be able to handle this. And I want to respect every single person that is a part of this world. I believe they all deserve respect, and I believe that they should enjoy their lives privately, or even at a Pride festival, whatever you want to do. And wear your rainbows, enjoy all of that. But whenever it comes to it being on government facilities and a part of, like, what our children are seeing, we, as Christians, should have the ability to raise our children how we want to. Like, if I don't want my child, you know, to say, you know, because I have a little boy that likes to play with dolls. If he comes to me one day and he says he's gay, I'm going to love that little boy regardless. But I want to be able to usher him into that, to where he respects his body, and he's able to say, "No, please don't touch me," to another little boy that walks up to him and says, "Oh, I like you. Let me do this to you." And the little boy that did this to my son, I trusted him. He was a sweet little boy. My son was being bullied, and he stood up for my son. I invited him to my house. He did these things in my house, and I had no clue. I thought, "Oh, they could have a sleepover. It'd be normal." It was not normal. The only reason he was caught was because of the little boy's father. And because I put my son in this situation, it put me in a very negative path at the time, and I broke down, and I did turn to God. And God showed me the right way to love my son, and of course, the right way to raise my child, even though he's playing with dolls. You know, I'm not taking that stuff from him. I let my son play with Barbie dolls. I took him to the Barbie movie, you know? I feel like I should be able to teach my child about sex and how to respect their bodies, not have things flown in their face where someone else is expressing their sexuality. Thank you.
Thank you.
What I'm about to say will be said in love, not hate. Mayor, city council, thank you for another opportunity to address an issue that has impacted me personally on many levels. Once again, I stand in support of Vacaville residents who fervently oppose allowing any flag on our city flagpoles other than our country's flag, our state flag, and our city flag. To raise and display any flag that represents an ideology is blatantly disrespectful to me as a citizen and a member of this community. As I've stated before, ideologies, they have their place, but your job is to govern in our city, not to support and highlight ideologies that only serve to cause division and certainly not unity in the city where you were elected to serve. As a Christian and a follower of Christ, I follow the rule of law, but not when it goes against my fundamental Christian values and beliefs. I love my fellow citizens, but flying the LGBTQIA+ flag is strategically targeted against all that I believe is right in my city and in the eyes of my God. Again, I admonish you, all of you, to do what's right in the decisions you'll be making in the days ahead, not just for a few, but for all of us who live here. Once again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening.
City council. My name is Reverend John Idell, and I am the priest in charge of the Episcopal Church of the Epiphany here in Vacaville, and I'm now a resident of Vacaville for my first month. Great city so far. Thank you for this opportunity. Our Episcopal Diocese covers the northern one-third of the state, and the Episcopal Diocese of Northern California seeks to represent the rich diversity of our region in its leadership at all levels. We also acknowledge that our churches sit on land where indigenous peoples have lived for millennia. We believe that all people are created in God's image and that we are created to be in community with one another. Therefore, we know we are most fully the church God desires us to be when we actively work to include all. We recognize that our tradition and our diocese have actively ignored and are sidelined the voices of many in our broader communities, and therefore, we commit ourselves to seeking leaders among historically underrepresented and marginalized communities in our denomination, such as, but not limited to, indigenous peoples, women, racial or ethnic minorities, individuals self-identifying as LGBTQIA+, individuals with disabilities, economically disadvantaged groups, our veterans, first-generation immigrants, or people with any intersections of these descriptions. This evening, I stand before you to advocate for the importance of allowing our city to fly the Pride flag. This Pride flag represents more than just a colorful piece of cloth. It embodies a powerful message of acceptance, equality, and love for all. When a city chooses to fly the Pride flag, it sends a clear message to its residents and visitors alike. It says, "You're welcome here, regardless of your sexual orientation or gender identity." It's a declaration that diversity is not only accepted but celebrated within this community. Flying the Pride flag is an act of solidarity with the LGBTQIA+ community, signaling that the city stands shoulder to shoulder with all our residents. This simple act fosters a sense of belonging and pride among those who have too often faced discrimination and prejudice. This encourages open dialogue about LGBTQ+ issues, breaking down barriers and building bridges of understanding. It promotes empathy and compassion, helping to dispel harmful stereotypes and misconceptions. Inclusivity and diversity are not threats to our community; they're strengths that enrich us all. In conclusion, allowing a city to fly the Pride flag is a powerful student of support, love, and acceptance, and encourages dialogue and fosters an inclusive environment where everyone can feel safe and respected. Together, let us fly the Pride flag proudly, create a brighter, more compassionate future for all in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Nick Carlson. I came to Vacaville in 1974 with the Air Force. I stayed here for a few years, married, with children, and then, at one point, I said, "Wait a minute. I am not, this is not who I am. I'm a gay person. I don't, you know, I don't belong in this environment, okay? I belong with gay people, whoever they may be." But because we live somewhat close to San Francisco, I began to realize, there's a community out there that is supportive. So I moved into San Francisco, and I lived there for 37 years. It turns out financially, the person I was living with and I decided we were going to sell our place, and I could no longer afford to live there by myself. So I moved back to Vacaville. Why not? It's a lovely community. And now, other people have spoken about all the reasons why we might want to support the LGBT community, and they're not going to go there. What I'm going to tell you about is, the first parade I went to in San Francisco was about 1980 or so, and with a couple of friends. And in that parade, there was a contingent called P-Fle. I don't know if you know what that is or not. Parents and friends of lesbians and gays. It brought me through tears. I had no idea, okay, that there were people out there who supported their children, and other people who were different from them. It made me feel so good. And in my 90 years, I've seen a lot of things go on, and I'm so happy to see the kind of progress that we have made legally and culturally. And I am proud that this city was able to issue a proclamation and to fly the flag, okay, for the last few years, and I encourage you to continue to do so in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alcina, and I have been a resident of the Solano County area off and on for about 10 years. I'm a student at Solano Community College and an employee at a local business. In the time I have spent here, I have met many wonderful people from the local college and other communities of which I'm honored to be a part of. All the relationships I have cultivated over the years since living here have been with people from all walks of life with their own stories. Many of the friends I have made over the years are part of marginalized groups such as the LGBTQ+ community. When I moved to California a little over 10 years ago, I left what life I knew as a 22-year-old to find something better. I came from West Virginia, a state that is known for its economic poverty- I came from West Virginia, a state that is known for its economic poverty, educational poverty, and health poverty. However, the poverty wasn't the reason I wanted to leave. I wanted to leave because of the hateful rhetoric towards different people, whether it be racist, sexist, or homophobic that permeated in all the small towns across the state. California has its reputation for progressive thinking, and my father also grew up in this state, so I knew one day that I would call this place home. Not a day goes by that I regret my choice of moving here, and I have met so many creative, intelligent, and kind people. I like to think that is due to our community being more accepting to various demographics of people, which allows space for all to express themselves more freely. I'm grateful to be a resident of a city that raises a flag in solidarity with a group of people who are so often victims of violent hate crimes and discrimination. Seeing the Progress Pride Flag for the month of June is one reminder of why I left my life in West Virginia to come here. When I heard about the recent pushback regarding the flag, I felt pretty sick. Although I do not identify as a member of the LGBTQ+ community, I do strongly advocate for social equality as well as the right to happiness and personal autonomy. I left a state whose Supreme Court still to this day actively does not protect LGBTQ+ people from hate crimes. The importance of our city raising the flag during Pride Month is to continue the efforts of increasing acceptance and protection to all marginalized people. So long as discrimination and violence are still committed, that all states actively do not offer protection of innocent people due to an identity, we do not have unity. I'm saddened to know that there are many individuals that are aware of this flag issue but cannot be here because of the consequences of being ostracized by their families and others. If it was not potentially dangerous, I knew that many of these people would be here today. And this is why we need to keep raising the Progress Pride Flag. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andrea. I've had the pleasure of getting to know the city of Vacaville ever since I moved out here to California. I would consider myself a member of this community, specifically the Solano Community College community. I've had the privilege of meeting and working with some of the most talented individuals at the college, some of whom would consider themselves part of the LGBTQ+ community. I have witnessed their skills, talent, academic performance, and engagement with their students firsthand, to which I am very proud to be a part of. Though I'm not a member of this community, the LGBTQ+ community, I do consider myself an ally, an ally that is constantly learning about others. I want to express my sincerest gratitude to you all today for displaying the Progress Pride Flag during the month of June. Not only did you display a sign of inclusion, but also a symbol of respect. I applaud your empathy towards the smaller community that still continues to fight an uphill battle towards centuries of biases and prejudice. I will never understand what it's like to live in the place of my LGBTQ peers, but I do understand the feeling we all have experienced regardless of your identity, rejection. I understand what it's like to feel like fish out of water, not being able to express your feelings, or being able to speak freely with others about the things that excite me or aspire me to do more. I first experienced these thoughts when I was just nine, just because I didn't speak a single word of English at the time. But to live like this every day of every year, and the only place you can call home is a different kind of pain I don't wish upon anyone. After the last meeting's display, I was left disheartened. I couldn't help but imagine how many people, especially some of our students, may have felt after hearing the comments from the public. I want all of you and everyone that is able to listen to know that there is community here that serves as a safe space for you regardless of who you are. It may be odd to find teenagers and 20-year-olds coming to city council meetings during public comment. We're often criticized for being disconnected or ignorant when it comes to our local government, but I want you to know that's not true. We're here and we're listening. Thank you again for displaying the flag and for striving to make Vacaville an inclusive, safe space for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Katie. I'm a community member and I work at the Solano Community College Library. So I work with students from Vacaville and the surrounding areas. I'm here today to call for support in flying the pride flag. Some background about me. The area I grew up in was very homophobic, and I ended up losing half of my family and all of the people I grew up with in church when I came out. The first pride event I ever went to was here in Vacaville a couple of years back. It was amazing to me to see so many people able to be themselves without fear of judgment. I saw families and young people there enjoying spending time in their community. And I ended up happy crying because I was just really struck with how much seeing that would have meant to a 16-year-old me. That there are people out there that will publicly support me and show me that I am safe here, that I belong. That is what the pride flag represents to me. I've carried that feeling with me ever since, and that's why it's been heartbreaking to see people trying to take that support away through trying to cancel pride or by opposing flying the pride flag. People have worked so hard to make Vacaville a more welcoming place for those of us in the LGBTQ+ community. And I've been proud to see Vacaville support us, including many of the queer and trans students I work with every day. I hope that Vacaville is not swayed by those who call us monsters. Please do not take away support from my students, from my community, from my family. Flying the pride flag has a profoundly positive impact on our community. It makes us stronger and more empathetic. Diversity is our strength. And I hope you will remember this as you make decisions about what the future of Vacaville will look like.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Cook. I'm the Executive Director at Solano Pride Center. I'm speaking in support of the city of Vacaville continuing its tradition of recognizing June as LGBTQ Pride Month and to raise the pride flag each year. I've had the opportunity to speak with many members of the council and community, as well as the opportunity to meet with Mayor Carley in May, to discuss this at length. I'm grateful that Mayor Carley decided to continue with the bipartisan tradition of his two predecessors. One of the issues we discussed was the Supreme Court case, Shirtlove v. City of Boston, and the need for the city to develop a flag policy. The majority decision in this case clearly illustrated that the city has the authority to develop a flag policy. And when it issues proclamations and orders a commemorative flag to be raised, it is doing so with the authority of a city government through government speech. And the absence of a flag policy, the city is exposing itself to legal liability. I also share that the flag policy and staff report from the city of Dublin with the mayor as an example. I am encouraged that this is being reviewed by city staff and will be agendized for a future meeting. I'm also speaking out of concern regarding the hateful comments that were made in opposition to this discussion item at the council meeting on July 25th. An hour of public comments where a majority of the speakers were spreading homophobic and vile tropes about LGBTQ people. It's critical that we speak out against this hate and show our community that Vacaville celebrates pride and diversity. Imagine if any other group of people in this city were spoken about in such a way. It's unacceptable. The fact that we are still having to debate equal rights for LGBTQ people in 2023 is shameful, questioning whether or not we should celebrate people for who they are and who they love. This clearly demonstrates why we should celebrate symbols like the pride flag and why they're important. For our seniors, who are the generation to throw the first brick at the Stonewall Inn, for our youth who can't imagine a future because they aren't accepted for who they are. You want to protect LGBTQ youth? Stop telling them there's something wrong with them for who they are. Allow families to access the life-saving healthcare they need to support their children. And about the comments of folks speculating what the gay agenda is, it's simply this. We want LGBTQ youth to grow up to become adults. There was a lot of talk about Christian values. I'm a gay Christian, and there are many people like me who are loved and affirmed by their families and their church communities. But that is a separate conversation because religion has no business in civic government. The same First Amendment that gives us the freedom to worship as we choose or not to worship at all is clearly established in the Constitution and creates a very visible separation between church and state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, everyone. My name is Andrew Angdahl. Though I'm not a resident of Vacaville, I was a resident of Solano County for five years in Venetian Belayo area. And I put myself forward in 2022 as a candidate for Congress to serve and represent this community. I was compelled to come here from Santa Rosa today because of watching that video of the comments on the 25th. And I wasn't originally going to speak today because I wanted to observe. I feel I am a guest here. I'm not a resident of Vacaville, but I do want to serve this community. And I want to remind the people here, regardless of their faith or their background or where they come from, this country was built for us. We are a diverse nation filled with every skin color, creed, religion, culture, background, sexual orientation, and otherwise. Everyone deserves a place here. And I think it is important that the city council chose to make this proclamation and to have the Progress Pride Flag flying abundantly here. I would like to share as well the rhetoric that we have seen across this nation. We are more divided than we have ever been. And if we are going to come back together and heal the wounds that are in this nation, we need to choose to love one another. We need to choose to be one community, one people. And that doesn't come from dividing ourselves on religious lines, on cultural lines, on sexual orientation lines. We are one people united together, and we need to choose that. I will serve this community if I am honored enough to be able to do so at some point in my life. Each of you, serve this community now. Keep continuing to be champions for our people and be inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Bush, city staff. My name is Dave McCollum. I've lived in Vacaville for 55 years. I was just a little kid when I moved to town. I serve as the Chair of the Visit Vacaville Board of Directors. And one of the missions, the most important mission of Visit Vacaville is to ensure that everyone is welcome in this town. Not just residents, but visitors. No matter who you are, we want you to come into town, enjoy what we have to offer here, because we do have a lot to offer. I was very disheartened to hear the rhetoric at some of the rhetoric at the last council meeting. And I have to say, there is one thing, though, that did resonate a little bit with me. And that was when a gentleman got up and he said, "The only flags that you fly over government buildings are government flags. U.S. flag, California flag, City of Vacaville flag." I understand that thinking. I do get it, and that's valid if that is your opinion. I happen to disagree with that. I disagree very strongly with that. I think that not only should we fly the pride flag, we should fly all kinds of flags. We should fly a flag with a menorah on it during Hanukkah. We should fly a flag for indigenous people on Indigenous Peoples' Day. We should fly during Black History Month. We should fly a flag there. Our Southeast Asian friends who celebrate the Festival of Life, we should fly that flag as well during that time. I can't imagine a single thing that this city could do to shine a light on us and let the world know that we are a welcoming place in something like that. We need to get together, talk to everybody, throw out the shamrock flag at St. Patrick's Day for crying out loud. I don't know what you do on Columbus Day. Some Italians out here, you got any ideas? Anyway, but I'm just saying honestly, I think that's something that we really need to do and be more inclusive and tell the world that we're inclusive. I think that would be a very, very astute thing to do. I think we'd actually get a lot of good publicity for it, to be perfectly frank, putting my marketing hat on now. But I really do think that's something we ought to do. And I don't want to dismiss that opinion that we should only fly government flags over government buildings. I think that is a discussion that we could have. But again, I don't really agree with that. I think we should actually fly the pride flag in June. Whatever commemoration there is in July, we should fly that flag as well and just keep on going and just tell the world, we welcome all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. So I came down here, I was about to have dinner, and then this got brought to my attention. Some of y'all know me. We've sat in the same room together and had meetings, Jeanette, Jason, Michael, with my organization, Solano Unity Network, which some of you know was started because my little sister was kidnapped by the Vacaville Police Department, taken behind a building and told that they would never find her. So we're going to jump off there, right? So the trust between us, there is none. I don't trust what y'all have to say, what y'all doing. I know you like to lump us all together like we're all groomed. We are a leftist organization. I'm not affiliated with anybody else. So this comes from me. The people in this room want to hurt us. The people in this room that are speaking hate want to hurt us. So I'm here to offer, anyone that's listening, defense classes, pepper gel, I will arm you. I will help arm you and defend yourself against the hate in this city because it's here and it's in our faces. Okay? Anything else I want to ask? All right. Cool.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jessel, Sisneros, co-founder of the Solano Unity Network, where an organization that believes in serving our underserved communities, our LGBTQ community, our disabled community, our BIPOC community. And we have heard some really vile things the last city council meeting. Things like what those people were saying end up in the ears of children, end up in the ears of teens who are struggling. And that affects them deeply. Suicide is the number one cause of death in teens. And you want to know who most of those are? Part of the queer community because of people like that who spew that. And you allowed that to go on for an hour. I don't understand how y'all can even do that. It's hate speech, y'all just allow that to go on? Someone should have shut that down immediately. That was gross that y'all let that go on for that long. I'm not even looking at you because we already know you're not going to do nothing. But the rest of y'all, what was that? Hate speech has no place in Vacaville. Vacaville needs to show its support for the queer community, trans and queer. It's not an inclusive place right now because you're giving them a platform. You're allowing it to go on. And if you don't keep that flag raised every June, that's going to speak very much of you. We're all looking at you. Don't allow it to happen. Don't allow this to continue. I'm sad I have to tell adults that. That wouldn't fly anywhere in a workplace normally, at school normally, but y'all let that go? Be ashamed of yourselves, truly. I'm ashamed of y'all. I'm real disappointed. And I really want y'all to think about that youth statistic I gave you. That's who we're here to protect. What I want to leave y'all with is we will not be quiet and we will continue to be in your ear about supporting the LGBTQ+ community. We're here and we're queer. Okay, bye.
Good evening.
I am Maverick Smith. I am the pastor of Revolution Church. What I'm getting ready to say is not going to be popular amongst my fellow churchgoers. But we need to stop fighting to pull down a flag, and we need to start fighting to put up a flag. We need to start fighting to put up the Christian flag. We're so worried about pulling down something that we know that is not right biblically. But we're not trying to raise something that we know that is right biblically. The last thing I need to say is this. The Bible says, let us come together and let us reason together. We're sitting here fighting amongst each other of what should be raised, what should be flown. Yet and still, our young and old people are dying. Fentanyl, heroin, and guess what? Vacaville is a hub for human trafficking. When are we going to set aside the pettiness and we can work together to stop the destruction of our family unit? To stop the destruction of our young people that are committing suicide day after day? To stop the destruction of veterans committing suicide day after day? I give out my humble and heartfelt apologies to the LGBT community because guess what? When I heard from these two, last two young ladies, Christianity is nothing but a hate group. Christianity is nothing but a hate group. That's what I heard. How can we get them to come to know the goodness of God when all they see is the wrath and the anger? That's not the Christian church. The Christian churches show love, understanding. We should love those who despifely use us. We should love those who are sinners. You've never seen in the Bible not one protest of Christian people. You've never seen Jesus protesting. You've never seen Paul, Mark, Luke, Matthew, John. Nobody was protesting, they just followed Jesus. Everybody under the sound of my voice, we have to understand, we have something bigger than this. This is bigger. So instead of trying to pull down the flag of a LGBTQ community, I may not have gotten all the rest of the letters and plus and everything together. And I am really, I apologize about that. But we should be trying to raise the Christian flag to show that also that Vacaville is a God-fearing city. Bless you.
Thank you.
Thirty years, and what is the process to approve another flag alongside of the flags that have been proposed? Does it go to a committee or subcommittee of some sort? I'm curious, I don't know. I mean, when you have somebody asking you to fly another flag.
This is not a time where we can actually engage in conversation, but I will tell you, what I had already originally said was that process will come to the council at a future agenda likely in September, October, to have that discussion in front of the public with the public's input.
So when you have somebody else come and propose their flag, a different flag, and we set a precedent by allowing flags to be posted alongside the United States flag, it just seems like this is gonna kind of get into place, flags posted over the next 10 years, possibly. And the precedent's already there that they should be able to. Now, I just feel like you guys have yourself engaged in something that's really outside of your basic responsibility to do the wonderful job. And by the way, I think you do a wonderful job with policing and the law and order in this town for all the years we've lived here. We live in one of the finest areas as far as that's concerned in Vacaville. But your responsibility, I believe too, if I understand it correctly, has, is engaged with building and who can build and where buildings can be placed and so that everything is done in an orderly way in the city. And it probably also involves the streets and the potholes and the chuckles and so many different things. But you got yourself into this situation, and my heart goes out to you. This is not easy. This isn't easy. You have another group, and even after that, another group, they're gonna want their flag up. What if the Anaheim Cucamonga Sewing Circle and Book Review, a bunch of retired ladies wants their flag to go up? Because they feel put upon. It just seems like a slippery slope. So I do appreciate you guys. And I thank you too, Mayor, for answering my phone call a couple months ago. I called the mayor and he answered the phone. He's available to the folks. I appreciate that. All right, that's my thought.
Thank you.
My name is Mary, and I wanted to say that to decline to fly the flag of a special group doesn't mean that we're demeaning the group. It means that the group is not elevated above another group. I'm a 78-year-old widow of 100% disabled vet. And I have always had friends that have disagreed with me in all of the communities. One of my friends was a lesbian, and we would go to coffee together. And she'd say, "I just can't wait to tell my mom I had coffee with a fundy." She called me that because I was a fundamentalist. And I had fun. So my pastor mentioned the love that we have for the world. And we do have that love. Haven't heard a lot about of that love from people here tonight that don't agree with me, but I trust that it's there. And as Pastor Smith said, that we can love each other, come together and come to an agreement. I'm in favor of flying government flags because my husband, obviously, is a vet.
Thank you.
I was getting nervous when I finally get here, but I want you to know, I came in love. And I don't know where I was at the last meeting, but I didn't hear all the hate speech that other people did. I like you guys. I mean, I'm probably on the other side of everybody's list. And Jeanette, you've been my friend for a long time, and I value you so much. And we're probably as far apart politically as any two people could be, but I care for you. I don't, I've lived long enough to know I don't know it all. I have been taught that through my own life lessons. But I follow Jesus. And what he tells me to do is love and take care of the children. I'm terribly, terribly fearful of what we're doing to children. I have friends who are ill. I don't know, there's too many to look. I have a friend who's trans, and I have friends who are gay. And I don't hate you guys. I do not hate you guys. I do not. I, who am I to tell somebody else they can't be? Who am I? I'm not. But LBG, all that stuff, implies sexual activity. And I don't think we should divide ourselves that way. I think that, I don't want to be with five-year-olds and says, "What's that about?" I don't want to do that. I just think it's too much. I think children should be not taught about any of this stuff until they hit high school. I'm also a therapist, and I see kids come to me who've been molested, and it's a lifelong issue. And if it's done by a student, it's a lifelong issue. If it's done by a parent, or a teacher, or anybody, and I've seen them all, they're lifelong issues. They're painful. And it's like soul murder. And, you know, nobody here is, well, this comes from everybody. I just don't think it should be in the schools as, you know, I mean, really, we're gonna have drag queens read? Could we just, just keep kids safe from sexual activity, from it, and not teach it? That's my biggest thing. And this flag divides. You know, I'm here because I'm an American, and I get annoyed with the president. I'm here because I'm a California resident, and I get annoyed with the governor. I have a big mouth, okay? But I'm not asking you to put a Catholic flag up. I'm Catholic, because that, not everybody is, okay? But we are Americans and we are Californians. And I like Vacaville more than I ever did before. Where am I? I'm gonna shut up. Okay, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Wow, how do you follow that? I'm gonna have to amend my notes based on some of the commentary here. I really don't appreciate the framing made by some people other than love and respect that was shown, as I mentioned in my own family and my own family's experience. Growing up in Santa Cruz, which we affectionately call it "Can of Screws," I used to watch the demonstrations and then how people would, nobody touched them, but they'd fall down and say, "Oh, perolese brutality." I'm seeing a little bit of that going on here. I'm gonna amend my comments here. Shirtlift v. Boston. The city of Boston claimed they did not have control over a flagpole. It was a community forum flagpole. And then when Shirtlift, a Christian, wanted to fly the Christian flag, they said, "No, no, no, can't do it." This is Shirtlift v. Boston. Shirtlift won the case to fly the Christian flag, not the other way around. You put yourself in a very bad position here. Clearly, the Solano Pride Center, legitimate organization, is a political organization. They lobby. So are we now going to be flying political flags? There was a formal request made to fly the Christian flag. And I spoke with that gentleman, or actually, he spoke to me. He wants that, and he's going to push forward. Because, as in Shirtlift v. Boston, being denied that thus far. I think it's best, knowing what a flag represents. Flags mean something. People go onto the battlefield and they die following that flag. The tradition is never to let the American flag touch the ground. And they hold that flag up to their death. And then another captures it to keep it from touching the ground, because that's what you served under. I do not serve under any other flag. I took my oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America in California. And then I made a promise, when I worked for the City of Vacaville, to serve the City of Vacaville. Not an oath, a promise. Flags mean something. And you should not be denigrating the meaning of a flag. I have complete love for everybody. I've told you all that before. Love everyone. You may disagree with them. But to say that there was anything but love and then to reframe stuff and then do the name-calling about hate and homophobic, et cetera, I never heard any of that. So I ask you, when you do this, bring the community together and only fly the American flag, the California flag, and the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Wait, good evening. Looks like you got another green kid taking a whack at politics on your hands. Anyway, the LGBTQ movement is a movement of love, tolerance, unity, and peace. I wholeheartedly stand behind these values. Unfortunately, I see a paradox. I understand that this movement is one of tolerance. Why do they not tolerate opposing views? I understand that this movement stands for peace. Why do they bring discord? They stand for love. Why do they hate my position? Council members, I support one flag, the flag of love, tolerance, and peace. The flag that unites everyone here in America. That is the American flag. Please, let this flag be the only flag we fly on our flagpoles. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Megan Dibble, and I am a relatively new neighbor of yours in Vacaville. My wife and I moved up here five years ago, and we live just off Cherry Glen, near Laguna Valley. And we really are enjoying our time here. Thank you so much for giving all of us a time to speak and speak our mind. I want to thank you for flying the rainbow flag and proclamation for Pride Month in June. As a queer resident of Vacaville, that really made me feel welcome in this community. We weren't super sure if we would be. And that was amazing. As a queer person, it's not always easy to feel welcome. And unlike what you think, what you might think after listening to many of the speakers at this forum the other week, gay people are not child molesters or perverts. We are ordinary people like everybody else. We're mainly concerned about getting to work, working hard at school, raising families, spending time with friends and relatives, and caring for elderly parents, and all the other, you know, mundane things that are important for all of us to do in our lives. But despite this, queer people are persecuted. We are called names like pervert, dyke, fag. We are often ostracized by our families. Shopkeepers may refuse service to us. And there were over 1,000 hate crimes against the queer community in 2021, and some of them resulted in death. Just last week, a young gay man in Brooklyn got stabbed to death for dancing in public. Before he was stabbed, several men started screaming homophobic slurs at him. And at that point, a 17-year-old came out with a blade and stabbed O'Shea Sibley in the heart. Because of such persecution, which tells us that we're not okay as we are, the LGBTQIA+ community responds with celebrations that say, "We are okay." The rainbow flag lets us know that we are not defined solely by oppression. I hear a lot of fear in the voices of people who spoke at the meeting on the 25th and also perhaps tonight. And they seem to be afraid of change, maybe. They seem to be afraid that they will be disempowered or lose their voice. They're afraid that things that they have always thought of as bedrock principles, like gender, cannot be depended on anymore. And I can see how that would be scary. But as a queer woman, I can affirmatively say that there is really nothing to be afraid of. I'm your neighbor. I'm a musician, I teach music, and I help rescue neglected and abused animals. And people are people, no matter what their sexual orientation or gender identity or anything else. Please be my neighbor. Please don't be fearful. Be compassionate and help raise the community instead of not raising the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Yona Vasquez, and I have lived in Vacaville my entire life. I have always seen constant support throughout living here. That was until I started getting older and I didn't see as much support. Walking down the hallways of Vacaville High School, I always hear comments, and I've never really liked them, always being slurs, whether that was towards people of a different color or people who are just different in general. We hear talk about being a big community when I don't see that as much with a bunch of discrimination going around, especially in the last meeting. All around the world, there are pride flags being burned to ash and people being killed and self-harming each other because they don't feel as if they are part of a community. Here, we should be creating a safe environment for those of the LGBTQ+ community and those of other communities who don't feel as safe to either come out to their friends, their family, their parents, anything like that. I have been blessed with being able to, sorry, with being able to come out to my parents and to my family and being able to be welcomed as well as me and my friends. We are all feel welcome within our families. But when we go out sometimes, we don't feel as welcome just because there is a difference in what people think. And they express it, and we just don't feel as safe. Schools are growing and becoming more inclusive. I know at Vacaville High School, we had a unity fair, and we had a bunch of different people from different backgrounds come and show their support and their love. It doesn't matter what color your skin is, who you are. We should be a community and be supportive. Flying the inclusive and proclamation policy for young people as well as myself, we feel more welcomed into this town. And I think that we should be keeping that for years to go. Also, at Vacaville High School, there is an LGBTQ+ community, and they are trying their hardest. They're a really small group. That is because people like myself are scared to come out to other people, and all they want is to feel inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
What a difference in tone, right, from the last meeting? In an attempt to bring more light than heat, I wanted to share why a pride flag or proclamation serves a substantial government interest. Earlier this year, I attended a keynote by Dr. Mitchell Lunn, professor of medicine at Stanford, who is conducting the largest survey of LGBTQ people in the country. Now, I'm not formally trained in the medical field, but I have learned some of what helps promote positive health outcomes in this community. And vice, Mayor Wiley, I can provide citations. citations. One survey of mental health professionals treating LGBTQ patients identified their top clinical concern was social stress. In another study, a patient summarized this in their own words. "I went to the group therapy session last month, and I was like, 'I feel really safe today.' Sometimes I forget how unsafe I feel." In the literature, this is termed minority stress for gender and sexual minorities, and it includes the stress both of experiencing discrimination and the chronic anticipation of discrimination. Living in a hostile household or a hostile community wears on you emotionally. It erodes your ability to trust people, to feel comfortable just being yourself. Worst of all, it can deprive you of energy meant for the people in your life who deserve it because you're so drained in self-defense. This stress contributes to alarmingly high rates of depression, anxiety, and self-harm among the LGBTQ community. So how can we promote health, positive health outcomes? One study noted that environmental cues, like a welcome sign or an LGBTQ staff member in a doctor's office, increased patient comfort and feelings of safety. Another study identified that the best way to build emotional resilience among the LGBTQ population is to focus on the positive. Survey questions like, "What makes you thrive?" "What brings you joy?" and explicitly, "What are you proud about for being gay, queer, transgender?" Think about how common sense that is, that to improve mental wellness, a person needs a positive self-image and feelings of self-worth. Everyone needs that. This is the reason for a pride flag or proclamation. They're good-faith attempts to say you're safe in our community. We welcome your contributions, and we've got your back. Small gestures that promote belonging and positive self-worth, environmental cues making a consistently hostile place, less so. And what does it cost? A piece of paper and some toner, an inexpensive flag, virtually free, but remarkably able to mitigate real-world harms. That's about as good a public investment as it comes. And to the city attorney, these proceedings are bald-faced discrimination. The city felt no anguish over proclamations until a gay man petitioned for one.
Sure, thank you.
That's it? All right.
Thank you.
My name is Ginger Tevlin. I'm a residence of Solano County. I am thankful for every single one of you. Thank you, John, Carly, and Vice Mayor, and all of you, and the seriousness with which you serve our community, and I am grateful for each one of you. Anyway, I would like to read a quote from Noah Webster, a direct quote. He's one of the founding fathers of this country, and he was not alone in what he believed. "The religion which has introduced civil liberty is the religion of Christ and his apostles. This is genuine Christianity, and to this we owe our free constitutions of government. The moral principles and the precepts found in the scriptures ought to form the basis of all our civil constitutions and laws. All the evils which men suffer from, vice, crime, ambition, injustice, oppression, slavery, and war, proceed from their despising or neglecting the precepts contained in the Bible. Our citizens should early understand that the genuine source of correct republican principles is the Bible, particularly the New Testament or the Christian religion. The Christian religion is the most important and one of the first things in which all children under a free government ought to be instructed. No truth is more evident than that the Christian religion must be the basis of any government intended to secure the rights and privileges of a free people. The Bible is the chief moral cause of all that is good and the best corrector of all that is evil in human society, the best book for regulating the temporal concerns of men. The Christian religion is the basis, or rather, the source of all genuine freedom in government. I am persuaded that no civil government of a republican form can exist and be durable in which the principles of Christianity have not a controlling influence." So to me, that's huge, and there's thousands of other quotes like this from our founding fathers. Anyway, I also wanted, I had a few points. An agreeance that we don't need to fly any other flag. There's lots of ways that we can love on our community, every single person in the community, if they're feeling hurt or damaged or sad. There's plenty of resources and things to help them, and I personally pray for my community. But anyway, I think that all members of committees should educate themselves on all the different things. There are some great, oh, sorry, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Everyone else. Okay, I'm James Joelber. I've lived here in Vacaville for, oh, since 2005. What I want to talk about tonight, okay, as far as the flag thing goes, several people have suggested that perhaps the best thing to do is fly the United States flag, California flag, if there's a city flag, fine, but leave it at that. We've spent 90 minutes now hearing consternation over this issue. You ladies and gentlemen have a lot to do with really just running this city. I know that once you get done with this excruciating meeting, you're going to go into closed session and have to talk about a whole bunch of other stuff. Don't burden yourself further. One thing that I believe needs your attention is the chemical waste dump that they want to build out at the old sewer treatment plant. That's near to existing neighborhoods. Why do I call it a chemical waste dump? Because an industrial-scale battery storage facility is hugely polluting. The batteries only last eight to 10 years, and then they are several thousand pounds of chemical waste. What are you going to do with that? The operator of that facility probably won't be here to take care of that problem because I've been reading up on these, where these large-scale battery facilities exist. At the moment, they're storing their dead batteries on site because it's too expensive to get rid of them. There is no recycling process for them. It's not profitable. Therefore, and I noticed that before, several years ago, this has come to this council, to a previous Vacaville City Council's attention, and I believe that even in 2021, maybe, this same body disapproved a similar proposal. Well, things haven't changed, only this proposal's even worse. The city staff at the time had said that this didn't fit with the plans for the area because a battery storage place doesn't provide any permanent jobs. So what good is this? They say they're going to give you a sports complex. Who's going to maintain it? The city already doesn't have the money to maintain a lot of our existing parks. It sounds tempting, but like I said, this sports complex is going to wind up being a bunch around a chemical dump site because that's what it's going to turn into very quickly. Utility scale, battery storage sites are very polluting, and they don't last. Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening, thank you. My name's Jeremy, and I was unable to attend the last meeting. I was out of town, so I can't comment on any of the alleged hate speech used. If there was, I want to join the chorus of those who denounce hateful speech of any kind, and I agree with many of the statements offered previously. I also believe that while the First Amendment does not allow for people to feel threatened or harassed, it also does not guarantee that any of us are free from feeling offended by words or beliefs of those we disagree with. And as Evelyn Beatrice Hall is credited as saying, "I may disagree with everything you say, but I'll fight to the death for your right to say it." That's the double-edged sword of the First Amendment. So as an 18-year resident of Vacaville, I've been blessed with many friends from across every ideological divide imaginable. I strive to love all by living at peace with people from diverse religions, ethnicities, sexual orientations, et cetera. Not only does my faith influence these values, but America's longstanding constitutional ideals demand them as well. This is why I'm respectfully urging you to adopt a policy related to flags and symbols and other endorsements that will truly protect the equality cherished by every citizen who calls Vacaville home. In a free society, it's the job of individuals to be good citizens to one another, and it's the job of government to govern impartially. Government is to protect the people's rights to individual ideologies and beliefs, but never to endorse one over another. In fact, the First Amendment seems to strictly forbid it. So when any symbol or monument or flag is displayed on publicly-owned taxpayer-funded property, it should reflect that sacred reality. People are free to express opinions and encouraged to express beliefs on their own property and clothing and homes and privately-owned businesses, et cetera, but it's never the role of government to do so. And this means that no personal ideology, religious belief system, or philosophical persuasion can be endorsed over another by government without being expressly unconstitutional. It also exposes our great city to a Pandora's box, as has been said, of division and other problems, including litigation. For nearly two decades, Vacaville is where I've raised my family, coached youth sports, fed the hungry, clothed the needy, helped in times of emergency, given sacrificially and opened our home to people in distress. And I mention these things because I want you to know that I'm not here to demean or complain. I'm deeply invested here. I pray for each one of you have mad respect for what you do for our city, and I just want to thank you for considering adopting a flag policy that will represent everyone equally under three flags, the US flag, the California flag, and the Vacaville flag. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle, and I'm a community member and an educator, and I'm here tonight to express my strong support of flying the pride flag during the month of June. This symbolic gesture holds significant meaning not only for our LGBTQIA+ community, but also for our greater community within and beyond Solano. Pride Month is observed worldwide. It commemorates the ongoing struggle for recognition and acceptance of this community. There's gaslighting happening even during this meeting. It also celebrates the significant contributions and achievements of the LGBTQI community. By flying the pride flag, we demonstrate our commitment to building a city where all individuals are respected and accepted, regardless of their identities. I also want to address a misconception that seems to have created an unnecessary division. The idea that supporting LGBTQI rights is somehow incompatible with certain religious beliefs. It's crucial to recognize the intersection between sexual orientation, gender identity, and religion are incredibly complex, but these ideas are not inherently in conflict with each other. Numerous religious groups, faith leaders, several lovely individuals that spoke earlier this evening embrace the LGBTQI+ community by creating welcoming and safe spaces for these individuals. They emphasize the inherent dignity and worth of all people, regardless of their identities. Moreover, it's imperative to acknowledge that all religions are subject to interpretation and reformation. Over time, society progresses, scientific advancements are made, we change, we grow as a society, and this prompts reconsideration of traditional beliefs and prevailing viewpoints. The flying of the pride flag is a powerful message that our city champions the rights of all of its residents. It signifies a commitment to creating a community where individuals can express their identities without fear of discrimination. By flying the pride flag, we embrace the diversity that is the strength of our community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is John Moore. I just wanted to make a couple of observations. I attended the last meeting, and I think that the use of the word rhetoric and hate speech, I don't think it should be allowed anywhere, but I was at the meeting. I don't recall anything that would rise to that level. I felt like everybody, though there was disagreement, they all made their points in love, in clarity, and I just think that that's something that was obvious to me, listening all night to what's being said. The other thing is, I'm a patriot. I love this country. I didn't fight for the country. I was, because of my age, I guess I slid through. I was too young for Vietnam and too old for some of the others, but many of my family did. Many of my family members died for that flag right there. I'm a lifetime musician. I've spent my entire life loving people of all persuasions, all colors, everything, and I love everybody because that's what my Christian faith demands of me to do. Now, we may disagree, we may agree on certain things, but the thing that's overwhelming to me, city council members, tonight is that flag right there that my family members died to give us entitles everybody here to not only say what they believe and believe what they believe, but it also gives them the right to be protected, and it gives them and you the duty to protect these people. I don't think there's any room anywhere for hatred of any kind, disparaging of anybody, and I will fight to protect anybody who's disparaged unjustly. It's just not right. But I think, and I went to law school, so one of the things that I recall my professors telling me at that time was that we, in certain arguments for different kinds of law that we would go through case law about, you know, that's a slippery slope. You've got to be very careful because if you open this door to this type of thing and the court agrees with you, then this sets a precedent for a lot of other things. Look, I think everybody should be shown love and the ability to feel belonging and to feel safe, but that flag of the United States of America is what entitles everybody to that. And if you feel that that's not enough, I think you need to reexamine what some have said that the country was founded on. Now, that doesn't give everybody a right to everything, but it certainly gives everybody a right to freedom and to stand up for what they believe in. So my suggestion is that we fly the United States of America flag, the flag of the California state, and if there's a Vacaville city flag, that we fly that. Otherwise, you open the door to everything. You know, I could say, "I'm a disgruntled guitar player, so I need to have everybody that's a guitar player, you know, join me." I'm just saying, I'm not trying to make light of anything. That's just a problem that you may face. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Richie Cruz. I'm a field representative for the carpenters union, Local 180. I've actually just been based, just stationed in 180, so I cover Solano County. I just wanted to formally introduce myself and take a couple of minutes of your time to talk about some labor standards that should be presented to the working class, and those are medical and retirement benefits, local hiring opportunities, and a commitment to an apprenticeship program. You know, it's a sad fact nowadays that over 50% of all construction workers are on some type of financial aid. You know, this goes in hand with having to commute four to five hours daily in order to provide chasing hiring opportunities. These local hiring opportunities with developments up and coming not only gives us the hours back with the family, but it maintains our pride of being able to point out a building and saying, "I built that. You know, I swung the hammer, and I had a big part to do with that development." Another one of our values that we hold in high regard is a commitment to an apprenticeship program. You know, this ensures that we continue to evolve with the ever-changing conditions of construction, that our future generations of carpenters are more than qualified and ready to complete high-quality projects in a safe and timely manner, and it just ensures that they maintain our legacy as the master craft. You know, carpenters are the ones that build this country, build this room that we stand in today. You know, along with all that, this apprenticeship program gives young adults like me an outlet. I was 19 years old, homeless, really an inch away from being another statistic, and this membership gave me an outlet to pull myself out of that, and it gives many young adults the same outlet, who are in the same position I may or I wasn't. You know, I will say that this membership upholds everybody's value, it considers everybody's opinion, and I'm more than proud to be a part of this membership that includes everybody's, that has no regard for your religion, race, sexual preference, merit. We just include everybody, and we want to elevate everybody and every community member who chooses to be a part of this membership and wants to build with their hands. You know, again, thank you for having me. I look forward to working in Solano County and working with every one of you closely, you know, beyond this three minutes.
I was raised in Fairfield. So was my father, grandfather. I graduated from RMO, and of course, we fought the evil Vacaville High School, which was on the hill. It wasn't the one that's down below. When I graduated from RMO, there was 180 of us, I think, in the class. What was unique about it was we were all raised in a farming community. During the summertime, we worked in the fruit, cut fruit or did what you had to do, worked with the cattle. About 1959, I went in the Marines. In Okinawa, we lost a lot of men. In Iwo Jima, the only flag that was raised amongst the Rbachi was the American flag. I had a brother-in-law that was on the second landing when they went to France. I had friends that are on that plaque across the street from Vietnam. One of them, Donnie Bennett, joined the Marines because I was in there as an upperclassman. And he was timid, the young man you ever wanted to know. He was killed the second day he was in Vietnam. But what I'm saying is, we all fought. We all respected that flag. California flag, the city flag where we were raised. California flag, the city flag where we were raised. Now, when I was raised in Fairfield, I'm Portuguese, and half the town was Portuguese at that time. I've heard every joke you can possibly name about a Portuguese. But I'll tell you what, we're all Americans, love this country, fought for it, and I ask you, gentlemen, to consider the American flag as our flag, nothing else.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Leslie. I've lived in this community for 20 years now, and I have a family of five. So I take a personal, I thought I just can't sit back and not say something. This is my city. This is my children's city. I love this city. The first time I came here, I was amazed that in the wintertime, I came from Colorado, where everything is brown, it was still green. It was beautiful to me. I love everything about it. I would have to say that as a child of the 80s, I'm just going to weigh in on the flag controversy here, but as a child of the 80s, I was raised with great respect for that flag. Everything about my school, every day, was, "We love this flag. We pledge allegiance to this flag." My grandfather fought in the war for that flag. That's the flag that was raised for all people that come to this nation. People flee to this nation for what? For what that flag stands for. It is freedom for all men, all women, no matter who we are, what we believe. I love everyone in this room. I don't agree with everyone in this room, but that is irrelevant. The one thing we should all rally around, what we should stand for, is that flag, the red, white, and the blue. Everyone, at some point, their family came to this nation because of the hope and the promise that that flag alone holds, and I think we need to remember that as a community. Don't fly things that are divisive. It's clear the other flag is bringing great division among people. We love those people. We don't want there to be division. We don't want reminders of division. We want to be reminded of our unity, and that is and always will be, I pray, that great American flag. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy made me come up here, so, thank you, Judy. My name is Michelle, and first of all, I want to thank that gentleman back there for his service to our country and all the people that came before him, with him, and after him. I've had friends that are veterans that have just recently passed away, and, you know, the flag is a really important symbol for them. I also want to thank all of you because you are serving this community, and I want you to know, I have yet to be to a city council meeting where I didn't feel safe, and as a mom and a grandmother, I have had a lot of interaction with people from the gay community. I've got a friend who is Mario, who is a very, very strong activist down in Palmdale, and he works with Gays Against Groomers, support him a lot, and, you know, just, there is love in this community. We moved to Vacaville after commuting for 10 years here because of the community here, the family programs, the kid youth programs, all of that, and I have never, ever felt that this community was not welcoming. I've had so many of my daughter's friends come into my house of all different sexual preferences, whether they were solid in it or just exploring it or whatever they were doing, and they've always felt welcome. So I know that there are going to be people who don't feel welcome. That happens, you know? But I do believe that that flag is a flag of unity, and just like the lady that was up here earlier, you know, she was saying that there's that division that happens when we start putting people into little pockets, little groups. I think this community supports everyone. I would hate to think that we don't, but I think that one of the things that I know that my prayer group gets together with, we pray for this community, all of Solano County. We've been praying against the spirit of division, and there is a heavy, heavy spirit here right now. And so one of the things I want for you guys to consider, I know you're in politics, but, you know, we are founded on godly principles. If you took any courses in God and government, you know, biblical sentencery, you will find out exactly how much of the Bible is founded on this country, how much of the founding fathers were pastors, preachers, speak, you know, they spoke, they prayed before meetings, they prayed before legislation. They looked in the Bible and said, "Okay, so we're going to talk about, you know, creating this law for taxation. What does God say?" So going back to that foundation is what I think you might want to consider doing, looking into, before you make any decisions on what you want to do. But I think if we really want to make this an inclusive community, segregating us into little pockets of population is not the answer. Finding a different solution for people to feel welcoming, have more events where we're all connecting as a community, I think that might be a better venue to go, or avenue to take.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm only going to take a minute. I'm Jeannie Gale, and I'm 84 years old, and I have been saying the pledge of allegiance to that flag ever since I was in school and learned to talk. And what does the last part of it say? For liberty and justice for all. So we don't need other things. We have liberty and justice for you people, for you, and for all, and we don't need other flags. We can have the Vacaville flag, the California flag, and the United States of America, the United States of America, and that's what I want to say. God bless you all.
Anyone else wishing to speak, or I'm going to close public comment? I'm going to close public comment. Mr. City Manager, one issue that maybe you can address, and that is, I heard something about the battery storage. Is there going to be an upcoming public meeting that can inform the community, knowing that this is not even to the council yet?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have put a lot of information about that particular project on the city's webpage, and I'll actually bring that up. I was planning on bringing that up at the end of the meeting with my comments, but if you go to the city's webpage under residents, right there at the top is a header about the proposed battery storage project. There's all kinds of information on there about the actual description of the project, the process, and the upcoming public meeting that we will have with the community in the first week of September, and so please take a look at that, and you'll have all kinds of updates on that particular September.
And I realize that there was supposed to be a speaker in the rear podium, and so I would, if it's okay, can I allow them to speak? Thank you. Sir, you can go ahead. Your mic is on. This goes back to the public comment. He was wishing to speak.
Thank you. Been interesting to hear these comments tonight, but I'm reminded there is an authority. That authority is God, and God has given us His word as to the relationship of man and woman. He made us, and He knows what He made, and He knows our function, and He knows what is best for us. And so I think as individuals, and I see you as head of the chamber here, what a responsibility you have, but you have an authority. You have a guideline. Is that going to be your authority? You have solid ground to stand on. What solid, more solid ground could you get than from God Himself? That's a challenge I give you. Thank you for all you do. I know it's very difficult. I know you get a lot of pressure, and I know you're very human, but let God prevail in your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm going to, again, reclose public comment, and we're going to stay in recess for five minutes. Some of you may not be staying for this event or the rest of the meeting, and we also have some other presenters who need to come in here, so we'll stand, we'll be back in five minutes.
Sorry before?
Yes.
I just, I didn't say something, or that's for you to clarify why we don't comment after open comment.
Okay. So the request is why we don't comment, and if it wasn't clear, it's because this is not an agendized item yet, and so we're here listening. Everything that is said in the setting of public comment, whether it's this item that was mostly consuming our evening tonight, or it could be anyone who has the ability to address your local city council, that's what it's for. But don't take anything from us sitting here, maybe not responding. We might feel a certain way, we may want to comment a certain way. When it comes back as an agenda item, that is when we will discuss what those options are, but that is the public rules for running a council meeting on business from the floor. Otherwise, you might bring something up, we begin to talk about it, someone realizing that it was of interest to them, but it wasn't on the agenda, so they didn't come. That's the reason for the rule being the way it is. It's not to be impersonal at all. Does that help? Thank you. So we'll be back in five minutes. Thank you.[1292.65]
Thank you, Captain. I appreciate that. So our first item tonight is a two-year update on the City of Vacaville's COVID-19 Economic Recovery Strategy. We have Tim Patton, our Economic Development Manager and guest, who I've got to know for a long, long time. And so I'm very pleased that she's here to make that. Tim, I'll turn it over to you and Audrey.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Goodingy Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight's item is a presentation with no action required on the two-year COVID recovery strategy update. Just some brief history. In February of 2021, the City Council adopted the COVID recovery strategy, which is when the City Council adopted the COVID recovery strategy, which is intended to implement short-term and long-term strategies to lessen the impacts of COVID-19 on the business community. With this information, an execution plan was developed. The execution plan details specific actions that will aid in the recovery of Vacaville's economy and includes action items from the City Council's strategic plan and the biotech and advanced manufacturing initiatives. On March 14th of this year, Dr. Robert Eiler, President and Lead Economist for Economic Forensics, presented an economic impact update on the status and results of the implemented items of the plan. The purpose of this evening's presentation is to provide the City Council with an update on the city's economy two years after the implementation of the plan. Leading the presentation is Economic Development Consultant Audrey Taylor, President of Chaven Concepts, who will provide an update on the following four items. First, an overview of the 2020 recovery strategy. Second, recovery of measured, as measured by indicators. Third is consultant observations. And fourth is how do we move forward in the years ahead between 2023 and 2025? At this point, it's my pleasure to turn over to Audrey Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I appreciate being here tonight. And I'll try to be very quick about this because our report, I think, is very good for you. So as you know, in 2020, Dr. Eiler and I did a report for you to help you through the recovery. And as Tim has already, we're going to go through four items tonight. So the first, just a reminder on your recovery overview. What we did in 2020 was to look at the three key drivers of your economy. And we look at those as the traded sector, which is usually manufacturing or any products that are going outside of the area. We look at the local serving, which is the business that's being done within Vacaville, and the visitor potential, those that are coming into and spending money here. So those were your three drivers that we took a look at. And we wrote initiatives around those three drivers. So what we're reporting on are those initiatives. When we look at the recovery, and you probably heard this from Dr. Eiler, where, you know, now three years out of what we're looking at. And we look at really two indicators. One is your gross regional product. You know, what are you producing? And are we doing better than we were in 2019 compared to 2022? And we look at the gross regional products and the jobs. And you will see here for all three of those key drivers, we have done pretty well. We're almost at recovery, not quite, but almost in all three of your areas, particularly in your traded sector, which is your most important because it has the most important economic impact to the city. Your local serving is almost there. And where we're still lagging is in the visitor potential, but that's a national trend. That isn't something that's just specific here. Another indicator is looking at your major sales tax contributors. Now, this report looks very good because you've recovered in all of your major factors. And the one that really stands out to us is your business and industry, where you've seen the highest recovery from 2019, which means that things are coming back for that. And again, if you look at your TOT tax down there, we're still slightly behind, which runs with the trend that the visitor market is also down. There are some, what we call sticky things from the pandemic that will stay with us for a while, that you still have to continue to watch. So we'll see population shifts. We'll see household reducing. There's different things that they want, different efficiencies that you've seen. There's shifting things going on with, are we going to continue to remote workly? And, you know, or is work going to continue to come back to the office? So we see now that businesses are asking workers to come back to the office, but we'll probably end up somewhere with a hybrid model of that. So what you have to be thinking for in the future is how do we deal with that? Also, we're still plagued with the inflation and what's going on with our economy and the real estate market. Our offices are still down and will be for at least the next three years, probably. We just wanted to give you an overview from a consultant's standpoint of taking a look at where you are. You're now three years into this and you're going to be moving forward. So I just want to congratulate you on the great strides that you're making in the bio. That's kind of your North Star. And you want to keep focused on that because that's what differentiates you in the marketplace. And you've made great strides in that area. So keep continuing that. We know that Genentech's announcement is like a shock, but it's also an opportunity. But it's one that have to have a focus and it has to have attention on all the time for right now. One of the things that we did notice is a capacity issue. You have to do all the things that we actually put in your 2020 plan. So you really only have two people that are working on this. So there's, there's a lot of things to be done when we talk about those three key drivers. There are a lot of initiatives in each one of those. The traded sector, the local serving and the visitors. There's a considerable amount of time that is spent with meetings and coordination and things like that, which you have to do. But that also has pushed certain things that are important for your Economic Development Department. They're being pushed to the back burner. Other shifts that we're seeing that what we say have to be watched. So your Economic Development staff have to be watching trends that are coming along. Some of that is your in-migration and your out-migration. That, what happens when you have that population shift? How does that affect each one of those key drivers? The shifts in your revenue generation, if you were to look at your top sales generators from 2019 to 2022, they all shifted. So what's going to happen over the next three years is those are, they're going to shift again. But we want to be prepared and understand what that shift is happening. So, and the only way we can do that is to keep watching what's going on. So your retail, the one thing for Vacaville, because you have outlets and everything like that, your retail is also shifting. And you're going to have to watch that with the outlets. How does that shift? Because your outlets were a destination before. As shopping patterns change, how does that change? And how does it change the brick and mortar and the facilities that you have at the outlets? There's an observation that you see in most of our economic indicators, and this is looking at the jobs, right? So we look at 2019 and we want to recover with our jobs from 2019. And all of those ones that you're seeing below the line, you're thinking, oh, my gosh, we didn't recover in jobs. Now, this is a little misleading because most of your businesses have job openings. What we have is we don't have people to take those jobs. So when you look at a, a slide like this, even though it keeps telling us we're down from 2019, that doesn't mean we don't have jobs. It's whether we have the people to take those jobs or not. And that's one of the things that the Economic Development people have to be working on is with your workforce, to make sure we have a workforce that will take those jobs openings. And as we move forward, we're going to kind of, going to walk through these with the traded sector. You know, just forward the next couple of years that you're going forward, you really want to focus on the areas where you can make those economic impacts, those big economic impacts. And you want to minimize risk. So you want to stay focused on that bio. You have set a foundation under that workforce. So the foundation that you have done with Vasslano Community College and the other programs you're setting up has been excellent. That's a great foundation, really has given you a reputation and a value proposition to these businesses. Other things that we have to keep working on in this ecosystem is the physical space, the supply chain, partnerships with universities, influencers, and continue the prospecting that you're doing already. Advanced manufacturing, again. Anything in the manufacturing field where you're making a product and sending it outside of the area has the greatest economic impact to your city. So you want to make sure that this is continuing and that we have, the businesses that you have here are expanding. And how do we make sure they're getting what they need, which may be workers at this point? In the local serving, this is where you have most of your small businesses and this is where your retail is. And so we have to adjust to any shifts that are happening, particularly with retail through the process. So the online shopping, you know, where does that shift to? So a couple of shifts that are happening. You could be considered to be over-retailed if you were measured against another city, but that's because you have the outlet malls. So with all the shifts in the online, we have to be watching in the future. Okay, is that going to hurt you? Or how do we continue to make changes through that process? Right now, you find that the active tenants that are out there in any place throughout California or the nation are really experience-based. It's not necessarily the shopping that we were used to before. It's more experience-based. And those don't pay sales tax, which is really what we're looking for with retail. Spaces are smaller and zoning has to change sometimes with the new uses that are coming out. And when those businesses come in and ask us for space there. So really considering, and I know that staff has talked about this, getting a retail consultant in to keep advising you as this, you know, industry keeps changing through the process. Small businesses, you know, Vacaville is made up of small businesses. Eighty-four percent are under nineteen employees. So you have a lot of small businesses. So here is really, you've, you've started your partnerships and have strong partnerships with the Chamber of Commerce and the Small Business Development Center. And I would encourage that you continue those strong partnerships and give them the tools that they need so that they can work with those businesses. So those businesses can continue to survive and grow. And your place development, you have also started this with your downtown. Downtown is an economic center. It's the heart of the city. So making sure that you, you know, move forward with a specific plan. You're starting your business walks and typically with a downtown that's doing block by block and then business by business through that process, which both, you know, the Chamber of Commerce and your SBDC could help you with because these are small businesses. So, and then again, just bringing again back to that retail because usually downtowns have a lot of retail as well as experimental type of entertainment downtown. Bringing somebody in just to advise around that mix that you have in the downtown. And the visitor oriented, I know that you have passed an arts program, a master plan, which I think is exciting because that's something that does bring visitors. You want to continue. You have an excellent partner with your visit Vacaville. They do one of the best jobs we've ever seen in the state. So I think you're very fortunate. And that one will come back as the market comes back. And just going forward, just want to reiterate, you know, there's been some great things. You're near full recovery, maybe not on the job side, but I don't think that's because you don't have the jobs there. You have the jobs there, they just haven't been filled. But continuing with your North Star, that bio is really important. And continuing with making sure that your advanced manufacturing are taken care of and they're growing here, not someplace else. Put a lens on your retail a little bit. And then continue to work closely with your partners. Implement what you're doing already with the downtown and continue to support your visit Vacaville. I think that you're going to make it through this next year. You will have seen full recovery by, by the end of 2020, which is what we were projecting when we started this process. And your staff is just wonderful to work with. And I thank you for allowing us to be a part of this process. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Very much necessary to pay attention to all these areas. One, I'll open it up to the council if there are any questions before I open up to the floor. You mentioned the job openings and the workforce. I mean, that's, it is a, that was an interesting slide that I also was wondering about because it's like, how can you, how can you appear to be in such a recovery mode, but it looks like you haven't recovered? I know people sometimes feel like I can't find workers in the different industries and, and sectors. And I would certainly love to learn more as we move forward because it's like, how can we be very specific to helping our businesses, especially our small business, to find the workers, right? We all have opinions as to why, but, you know, the work, there's work out there if people want it. That's what it seems like.
Every, every community is struggling with workers.
I figured as much.
Yeah. And, and what you have fortunately is you have a very good workforce development organization here. So working closely with them. And it takes, you know, education, workforce, you know, all those departments working together to solve the problem. But it's not, it's not just here, it's every place.
Thank you. Councilmember Silva.
Thank you. I heard that there, so in some other agencies, they're embracing a sixty percent, this data that's suggesting a sixty percent chance of recession looming. Is that factored in, in this? And how would that matter?
Yeah, we highlighted that.
If it's true.
If it's, we did highlight it in there and we haven't factored in. You know, Dr. Eiler could do that for you. And he is part of the time, you know, if there was a recession, what does that look like? And who would it hit? Which sectors do you hit? The ones that really are at risk for you is going to be the retail. I think your manufacturers are doing very well. You know, they've gone through their really bad time. They now have their supplies. They went through that issue and they've got their supplies back. So it seems to be pretty strong. They've all kind of held back a little bit and haven't gone full force. So if, if you've heard any place, it's going to be in the retail.
All right. And so then, as far as I, so the workforce development continues to come up as far as retail, as the mayor mentioned, small, small businesses, customer service type area, restaurants. That's what I was thinking of. So in that sense, and along the lines of increasing the workforce for advanced manufacturing, what, from your perspective and from your research, what type of things are actually helpful in actually addressing that? I hear a lot of talk about what we feel we want to do from the national level all the way down. But I don't, I question if we're actually implementing policies, practices and support that's actually being effective in addressing the, the workforce. Because a lot of times we continue to see the same disparities that exist throughout our communities. So trying to pick your brain on that.
Well, it's a complex issue, you know? And part of it is, you know, for businesses, do you have the type of workers that have the skill sets that I need? And we kind of start there. And then for other workers, is there anyone that's willing to go to work? You know, for, for this type of job? And those are two complex issues that I think every community is working with. And there's no single silver bullet for it. You know, I mean, that, that's where I think your workforce development and the agencies, education included, are working around to try to figure out. Your community college is working very hard on this. They're trying to, the community colleges now have a program called LAEP, which, and they're actually paying fifty percent of the wage to have worker experience, they call it, not internships anymore, worker experience, trying to get people into jobs so that they get that experience. So there's a lot of programs that are out there, but I think it's still going to be, you know, year, two years away before we can really handle all of the issues around this. You know, and part of it is caused because of the pandemic.
Well, the states requiring, or not requiring, they're allowing commercial, these own businesses to be converted to residential if certain objects matter. That concerns me personally because if we don't have jobs, where, where are people going to live? How are they going to support their ability to live, their quality of life? On the other hand, I also hear arguments that the market is actually driving that. So if you have vacant commercial lots, that in itself, from a, from the landowner's perspective, you know, they're, they're looking to maximize their profit amount of business model. So from your perspective, what kind of concerns should we have as far as how we support our current and future anticipated economy between commercial?
I'm not an expert at the housing side, so I, I don't feel comfortable that I could answer that for you and maybe what you're looking for. You know, I think that where economic development really looks at it is they're really trying to make sure that the businesses that you have can, can have the skill sets they want. And then the businesses that you want, such as your biomanufacturing, that we're trying to build that workforce with the skill sets, which is where Solano Community Colleges come in and some of the other programs that you're offering for certificate programs and things like that. So trying to, to build around the workers that are needed for the businesses that you have now. I hope that helps.
Yeah, I know it's a bigger complicated issue. Just, so thank you.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. Sorry, I need the voice. I repeat the conversation. I just actually kind of piggybacking off of what the last few comments, Congressman Silva said regarding kind of like economic development. I read the report. It definitely from 2021, 23, now Eiler had, he had his patient, but we've changed. So we've seen a faster than ever forecasted recovery in employment with inflation. And so now, he wasn't right on that, but what kind of bookends, what we're talking about, the young development of really what Vacaville has right now, we have $3.2 billion of Travis. We have the biotech we're trying to do. We have twenty-two percent of the Vacaville residents live and work in Vacaville. Seventy-eight percent of people leave Vacaville. So I think the really thing we need to focus on is the workforce development. We need to find a way to increase the number of Vacaville residents that are educated, trained, and ability to work in Vacaville and reduce that number. We have this, we have the people. They're just going to other communities and buying lunch, buying dinner, buying gas, buying snacks, and those tax dollars are now spent in other counties. We need to train them and invest in them. The hard part is housing, right? We have seventy-eight percent of the non-active personnel that was Travis and active doesn't live in the base. We need them to live in our community. So one part of the, the paperwork, talk about housing, we have to get it right. So that's one thing we're all in council, we're centered in the housing element, we're talking again. But the housing does play a major role in allowing for the businesses that come here make the decision to place Vacaville on the top of their list with the biotech, what we're doing. But the housing is, is housing education is key for jobs. People are going to pick other communities, they're going to jump over us to go to Sacramento. If we don't get it right, we had to have the jobs here that can support the cost of living, and biotech's going to do that. But we got to really make incubators. I really think that's the big linchpin about how we're going to make this thing work. If we can't house the residents or the future people, they're going to go somewhere else. So I think we really need to make sure we build housing that's support all levels of the biotech and support the existing people that already are here, that either are living in the old county and came back to Vacaville. We need to get the dollars here. So I think it's important. That's what stuck out to me in the report. When it comes to housing on like Vacaville doesn't have a horrendous amount of usable industrial that could be easily converted into office space. It's really expensive to do it because a lot of the buildings weren't built to be kind of cubical into condos and apartments. It's happened in other cities. But I think the ground up construction is where it's going to be for housing. I think manufacturing can retool the existing manufacturing. I don't think Vacaville wasn't built to have the solid buildings that are Victorian that you can take easily and turn into apartment complexes. It's becoming a big, a big problem because retrofitting is, is very expensive. But I'd love to talk to Dr. Eiler and have him address here out what kind of best way to take to bring in kind of like industries through Solano Community College to help them like retrain the workforce in Vacaville to decrease that number. Because if we can get half the people to stop commuting, the amount of tax dollars and the benefit to the city, that's phenomenal. So I think that's the kind of big elephant in the room, is happy will stay in the city. Thank you.
Do you want me to comment on that?
Sure.
Well, interesting, you know, economic development is complex because there's many things that, that go into economic development, and we're really focused sort of on the economy, you know, itself. Where, where do we create the most economic impact through that process? And then as you layer out, so at the core of it, we're looking at, okay, what's creating that economy? And then as you build out, you're looking at what you're talking about, you know, the things that make Vacaville attractive to jobs and other things. But as you think about within your core here is also consider, you know, the talent pipeline that you're growing also, you know, who is in that talent pipeline that will be coming up and taking those jobs? So maybe not everybody is commuting out, you know. You're lucky twenty-two percent here. There are a lot of communities where, you know, they only have less than ten percent actually working in the city, you know? And that's, that's a phenomenon throughout, you know, California unless you're in a rural area, you know, where you have to work there and you have a longer commute through that process. So I wouldn't leave out the fact that you really want to look internally at your education and how that's doing and what that talent pipeline is going to be, which will help to increase that staying here and working here that you're looking for.
Yeah, that was, that was one of my points. Kind of segues off of the comment that the gentleman from the Carpinter Union, like when it comes to Travis, the amount of money, they've kind of thrown a bone out there, going to hint, the amount of money that is in the community that they're willing and able to get federal contracts. There's so many opportunities that we can train and educate our Vacaville residents to build businesses that could serve directly to the federal government and keep those tax dollars and federal government into our community by manufacturing and just supplying vendor services. Like, there's a lot of opportunity to educate our Vacaville residents that you have a three-point-to-a-billion-dollar casino is never going to stop federal government. Like, build companies to serve them, and we all win. So I think there's, there's, there are communities outside the city to get products for them, coming right up the freeway, pass Vacaville every day. So I think we got to stop that and really educate people that there's a golden opportunity to create businesses to work with the federal government and build those businesses around Vacaville.
Agree with you. Yeah.
Councilmember Chapman.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. And to go along with the conversation that my colleagues brought up, and you had mentioned Solano Community College, and you said there was a new program, LAPD or something like that. They also have a career, career technical education program.
They do.
Yes, which is excellent. And then I'm going to mention a person that spoke before us this evening that's sitting in the audience, and he's a carpenter. And he spoke about the apprenticeship. And speaking, and I've, I've had many visits in the past six, eight, nine months with unions, and there are several apprenticeships available, and they're looking for people. And I know I have mentioned the need, or I would like to see a career fair here in Vacaville. I've also mentioned we have the biotech industry hub coming here, but our people that are here that need those jobs don't have the training to get those jobs. So I think we as a council, as a city, we need to do more to help our residents stay here, you know, to keep, bring the jobs so they don't have to commute out. A lot of the construction that went on, how many of our people actually received a paycheck from those developers? So there, there are things that we can do right here to increase the numbers to, and you know, also the, your, the numbers that were on your slides as far as the number of jobs that are available here, and the migration in and out, or the migration, they were on the top side. I mean, they were way up. And so I, you know, that really said something. So, but at the same time, I, you know, you shop here, you go, and the first thing you see is hiring, hiring. So following the pandemic, prior to the pandemic, they were probably fully staffed. After the pandemic, they can't get the employees. Have our population decreased? But like you said, it's everywhere. It's not only here. It is everywhere. Where did the people go? Why is it so hard to fill those particular jobs when there's a great need? We have the unsheltered, whose income declined because inflation, everything else was going up. We have an apartment complex that I was working with last week. I was just, I just received a phone call. They're having their rent increased. These are people that are barely making it and don't know, you know, what tomorrow's going to be like. So anyway, I just feel that what can we do? What can we do more of to help all people become employable?
I would say that, you know, what you're doing with your bio program, where you're doing training programs that you don't necessarily have to, you know, there are certificate programs that can go into the bio, which are great jobs. And those certificate programs, you worked with a community college to put those together, and you worked with other trainers to put those together so that a student doesn't have to go to two years, right? Or they don't have to do a long term through that. So that's going to give you leverage in bringing in new people into those training programs. And I do know that, you know, the colleges, the community colleges, any program that's training their apprenticeship, they're also trying to get people into their programs, you know? So this is a phenomenon that's going on, that we have people that are not, don't either want to go to work or they don't want to even be trained. And again, so that's when you start looking down, okay, what's, what's our next layer of talent that's coming up through this process? And how do we make sure that they know about these opportunities through that process? It's, it's very complex, and that's why you have so many agencies right now trying to work on that through the process.
That's, that's a great question, Councilwoman Chapman. I mean, there's the, there's the programs, the apprenticeships, the community colleges, the CTEs, but there's also the willingness factor, which is infinitely more difficult than the actual like programs that we can actually put out to our citizens and get jobs to have them stay here and work here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up to public comment. Being done, I will bring it back to the council. Vice Mayor Wiley.
Thank you for your presentation. A part-time job and afford to live in Vacaville. So I don't know if you want to comment on part-time jobs versus full-time jobs or not, but that, that is a concern. And I will say that we did have a vendor fair just about a month ago at Travis One Building, and it was with the vendors from the airbase and local vendors so that people could get the help that they needed and know what forms they needed to do to be government contractors. So with the traffic committee, they're really working on trying to get those established and built. And then I just also wanted to ask of the program that you're part of, you know, this is called COVID recovery. So will you do, you know, the next two years still be calling COVID recovery? Or just, so that's what I wondered about. Because I, you know, I was just hired in twenty, or elected in twenty, and that's when we were in the middle of it. So I don't know if you had previously worked with a lot of economic recovery, or if this is just since COVID and what the long-range plan is.
The, oh, I guess, sorry, Audrey. The intent of the recovery strategy was to be a three-year strategy, 2021 through 2024.
And the first time we talked, is it going to be this shape, that shape, or that shape? And I think we ended up in better shape effects from the COVID. So I, I mean, I totally understand that.
Yeah, that, that was the intent. And yeah, as you said, we did fare better than probably ninety percent of the cities in Northern California. In a lot of ways, some of our, you know, established restaurants that were chains actually in a lot of ways saved us during that period. So we did fare well. Moving forward, I think it's, we, we actually, I think we're in a period where we can actually look past COVID and look into like a more generalized ED strategy moving forward.
I think, I think the initiatives that you instituted in 2020 has helped move that. You, you were thinking strategically about how to make sure that you protected those jobs and, you know, economic impact that those jobs made. So did some excellent work through that process.
So then my question about the part-time jobs, is that something that we need to work with businesses so that businesses can hire, you know, more part-time jobs? Or how can we build part, I mean, full-time jobs or better jobs than just hourly, part-time? And if it was even hourly and you had a schedule, it'd be one thing, but it's hourly, when we call you, you can come in, and that just isn't, is not a way that anyone can be successful?
So again, you know, complex workforce issues here is that, you know, many, many businesses want full-time jobs. They want that worker there. They may do hybrid, you know, remote working type of things. You have certain businesses that will never hire full-time people, you know, they're just, that's the way their policy works. But you're also having a workforce who want to work part-time and not full-time, you know? So there, there's, there's both sides of that picture that you have to look at. So the type of job and the type of business that will always have, you know, part-time workers or seasonal workers through that process, and then there'll be the ones, I think that you have put an emphasis again on those that make the highest economic impact, which are typically in like your bio or your advanced manufacturing, those tend to be your full-time, higher-paying wages. You'll find healthcare, you know, which may go to a hybrid or different types of work schedules that, that they have. So it's all kind of an influx of what's coming out. And I don't think anything is going to be normal in the workforce for a number of years.
That's member Silva.
Thank you. So my first part was the questions, right? So just some comments in general. I think for certain business, it's a challenge. When we talk about part-time jobs and whatnot, it's a challenge because in certain business models, it doesn't, based on their product and what they produce, doesn't necessarily produce that, along with a lot of different, different state laws that make it increasingly more challenging. And that's just coming back from a lot of feedback from different business owners. And that's, you know, to create a lot of challenges for them. That said, I think one of the things that, you know, one of the things that's, that's done and how we can continue to support the ability for us to develop a workforce is starts with our relationship between our school districts. So I, I know that they're involved in economic development discussions at the county level. We have our either two-by-two or three-by-three where we discuss, where we can discuss whatever, essentially whatever we want, workforce development and how we align is, is key to that. So for example, in my opinion, that messaging of service, that messaging of the ability to make an impact, one's purpose in life, those are discussions that are typically or can be implanted from the very early age, your K-six time range. And then once they get around fifth grade, sixth grade, beyond that, research has shown that's when students or kids start making more independent decisions, and that's when the kids can start getting into more, more problems, more delinquency. So that's really the, that, that one key point where the excitement to learn and be engaged and having more hands-on opportunities to explore and to learn how to fail and how to overcome challenges, that's where that starts to, starts to drop off for a multitude of reasons. I think that our career technical education programs is absolutely key and fundamental. I think that our career technical education programs is absolutely key and fundamental to that. For me, I believe that our science, technology, engineer, math mathematics, a lot of people often divide those two. Thinking trades is like not part of STEM. But the sciences is absolutely a part of the trades. That is engineering. That is manufacturing. It includes multiple a- aspects of science and how we apply that to everyday life and how we sustain our ability to not just earn a living, but also to help others sustain a quality life, including including throughout our, not just our community, but throughout the world. So I think creating and support, continue to support pipeline programs to where we see more opportunities for youth, not necessarily to go to college per se, but to be able to get the skill of what I call the skills to pay the bills, right? The goal is to be able to, how to become independent to where um that the goal is to become independent and to live the quality life that you seek within the American dream. Uh and hopefully we do that without, you know, exploiting and taking out of on others. But I think one of the key things that we have, as you mentioned biotechnology, is that our community college in the sense has a agreement with two local high schools. Starting off this semester, um there will be two, one class at Vacahay, one at Wood. There is a summer internship that we had through City Hall. A good number of students there were actually interested and actually sent emails following up on how they can actually enroll in these elective-type classes. They get college credit, but more importantly, they get skills that will allow them to have a certificate that makes them employable. Though, as you mentioned, a lot of times folks don't have two years to go by. And I think that's something that's a flaw within some of our college system or even our training programs. People need to pay bills now. And if there's more of an incentive to be on, let's say, for example, unemployment or living off of somebody else, there's less incentive for them to go a different route to become more independent. And so I think finding that balance um between the ability, uh I I believe that there's still a place for part-time jobs because my, some of my students as a professor are looking for those part-time jobs. They're looking for something that helps develop their ability to have, develop those workforce skills. And in biotechnology, a lot of people think that uh that if they work in customer service, that those skills don't apply to to places that are bio-manufacturing. That's not true. About twenty-five percent of their populations are coming from non-science backgrounds. What most companies are looking for are three things. Can you show up to work on time? So get to the interview on time, which means early. Number two, will you actually work when you're here? So that'll go through the interview, the question process. And number three, can I work with you? Are you, I can't say that word, but are you somebody that I can actually work with in a positive relationship? So as mentioned about different um different opportunities, one of the cool things that, and I gotta put this out there. If where you start is not where you can, where you're gonna finish, right? We all have a different starting point. Where we finish is all depending on the effort we put into it, the relationships we build, the more that we invest in ourselves. And uh one of the things that we have within our community, uh Solano Community College has a 2.9, the largest grant that they've ever received, a 2.9 million dollar grant over the course of five years to provide scholarships for students to enter stem cell, anything to do with stem cell regeneration. So that's through a state-funded bond. That is something that's coming back into our community that our students have access to. Then there's another small scholarship, just we're talking about opportunities, another small scholarship.
I know, but we're not gonna get to it tonight if we don't.
We will, we will. There's another small scholarship that uh, just to put this in perspective, that other folks, other employers are seeing the value in, I don't need necessarily somebody with a bachelor degree. Again, I need somebody with workforce skills. So I think to end it up, to wrap it up, what's important, because I don't want the sound machine. But I guess.
Twice.
No, the the point is that we have all these opportunities out there. The question is, what do we choose? And how do we spread that message that there are opportunities that are out there, whether it be through apprenticeships, whether it be through schools, whether it be through trains, through the city, on how we help support that within our purview and how we connect people to other resources throughout our region? Because I, in my opinion, any neighboring city that benefits, we all benefit because we're so intercolated. And seventy percent of people are are working out of town. That tells us that one benefits we all do. Thank you. Have a good night.
I appreciate your presentation. Clearly, there's a lot of passion on this this issue. I realize that this is our recovery, but it's not just the city of Vacaville as the government, but it's also as our community. It's going to be helpful for us to become informed on all of these, and it is important to all of us. So I appreciate your presentation.
You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate. Item nine B, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This next item before you is a presentation and acceptance of the Vacaville Chamber of Commerce's annual progress report and approval of their program of work. We have Don Burris, our Economic Development Services Director, who will introduce the topic, followed by a presentation from Debbie Ajidio, the President and CEO of the Chamber.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Vice Mayor. Don Burris here, Director of Economic Development Services. Very happy to be in front of you all this evening to work with our Vacaville Chamber of Commerce and their presentation with their annual progress report and their annual program of work for 2023 and 2024. This evening, we have Debbie Ajidio with us, who is President and CEO of the Vacaville Chamber of Commerce. And she will present both of these topics to you this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you, Don, for the introduction. On your slide that's up there right now is our mission statement, and I won't read it verbatim, but mainly it speaks to that everything we do is about strengthening our local economy, which one is your strategic plan goals. So we feel we can meet an important part of that and help with all of this wonderful discussion that's happened tonight. You're gonna see, I'm gonna touch on some of these comments you guys had tonight. So it's done. Our business, our business is a business. We're a 501(c)(6), a nonprofit, but we treat it like a business. And the success of our business is directly related to the success of all of our members and small businesses in our community. That pie chart is up there to show you just the diversity of our membership. If we had any one main capacity, main category would be professional services. But otherwise, it spreads over quite a lot of different industries, including healthcare, education, manufacturing. About seventy-seven percent of our membership is small business. We count that as fifteen employees or under. We do have also eight percent nonprofit in our membership. And then the rest is large to medium, about fifteen percent. We thrive on committees. We don't get anything done without our volunteer committees. And some of these I'll hit as we go through, but the one I really want to point out is our ambassadors. It's our volunteer force. They are twenty to thirty people that get together and form just amazing outreach to our businesses in the community. They're a great line of communication for us so that we can bring back to economic development what's happening out there. And we rely on them to make a lot of our successes. I do want to point out that we do have a PAC, Political Action Committee. It's completely separate. It's its own funding source and its own distribution and collection of funds. They do make endorsements, as many of you know, and we do hold candidate forums. But that is separate from the main chamber funding and the funding that you give to us also. Couple of graphs here for you. Membership. Membership is very important to us. It is a primary source of our funding. About, I put my glasses on, I could actually see my own notes. But um with membership, we have had a steady hovering of around 500 members from 2015 to 2018. We hit a low in twenty-one of 368 members. And I'm proud to say that we're up to 540 members today. And that continues to grow. We have applications, memberships come in all the time. I will say that part of that big growth was a membership event we had in February of this last year. Many of you helped participate on that. Many of you became members because of that. But it took, again, a big volunteer force, calling businesses that our own businesses thought would benefit from chamber membership and being more engaged. So there was obviously a demand to come back around. So our service agreement with you has five main categories, and I'm gonna touch on each of these as we go through. But these are really important about becoming a vital resource for the community and becoming essential to our businesses, providing services that maybe they couldn't get in other areas or just partnering with other organizations, including economic development, to bring services to the city. Don, you're a great assistant there. I don't even have to ask. So promoting and supporting local businesses, I'm thrilled to say Genentech goes to town. We talk a lot about Genentech and their announcement of leaving the city. Genentech is operating business as usual until they are no longer here. Genentech Goes to Town is a fantastic program, put seventeen thousand dollars into small businesses in Vacaville last year. We're gonna be doing that again in partnership with them this September. They're gonna be giving a little bit more to their employees. It's their thirtieth anniversary. So they give each of their employees Genent bucks to go out and spend. So they anticipate at least twenty thousand dollars going into our small businesses in a two-week period in September this year. So we're partnering with them again. We do a lot of digital and social media promotion for our businesses. We're, we have a fifty percent open rate, and I don't know how I get into details and numbers and stuff, but fifty percent open rate is fantastic for social media. Most national average is twenty-two percent. So what that tells me is that people are interested in the information we're providing. They're interested in how we can help their businesses, and they're interested about what other businesses are doing too. Go ahead, Don. Professional networking and connecting. Networking is definitely one of the primary reasons that a business will join the chamber. For others, it's not important at all. But for a lot of businesses, it's how they think they will grow their business, and we found that it is a way they grow their business. Jeanette, you mentioned the vendors and contractors forum with Travis Air Force Base. We manage the Travis Regional Armed Forces Committee in conjunction with the Fairfield and Soon Chamber of Commerce. But it's been about three years since we've been able to have this event because of COVID. But what it was, was bringing a free event for businesses to come find out how they can do business with the base. And I learned a ton because I think we think about the large opportunities to work on the base. But the uh the presenters there said everything from DJs for their dorm parties to hair salons to nail supplies. One of our newest members was there. He does a mobile auto AC tune-up business. And he says, they got lots of cars on the base. I want to figure out how I'm gonna get on the base. But so that was a really fantastic event, all up and down the different levels of businesses that we can partner with them because it's another city. It's our eighth city out there. Vacaville Restaurant Alliance, the Restaurant Alliance has has starts and stops and starts. But what it was formed was to bring the food and beverage community. We talked a lot about hospitality and tourism in the last presentation, but to be a resource for the food and beverage community so that they can share their concerns, their issues. One of my favorite stories out of it is one restaurant said, you know, I just want to order two cases of lettuce, but no supplier will do an order that small. Someone else said, well, I need to order twenty. Let me add two into my order and bring those two cases over to you. So it's just bringing partnerships and different solutions together like that. That's really been a benefit out of that. And then I also would be remiss not to point out our young professionals of Solano. They were young professionals of Vacaville last year. They are expanding into the whole county because we find those connections are more important. I think maybe Councilman Silva, you said when one city helps another and or a region, that's what our young professionals see too. And so they're growing. Workforce development, talked a lot about working with education. We work real closely with the Solano County Office of Education. We participate on their CTE Advisory Committee, also their Work Ready Certification Program, which if you have never done mock interviews for that program, please get in touch with me. These kids are doing this voluntarily to spend an extra after-school hour class time to learn how to be employable. They go through everything from how to dress, how to write a resume, how to get letters of reference, and then it ends in the mock interviews. So one of the ways we're helping there in the younger workforce development. Vacaville Chamber Education Foundation, if you didn't know it, the Chamber has a 501(c)(3). That's our education foundation. And we give out scholarships each year specifically designed for those that may not get traditional scholarships to go on to four-year college. This is for students maybe pursuing the trades path, pursuing a certificate in a specific industry. It's also designed for people re-entering the workforce. So maybe someone raised their family, now they're ready to go back to work and they need some special training for that. So this is really what those scholarships target, and we felt it was a a missing piece of opportunity for workforce development out there. One thing we'll touch on in our uh program for next year, but we have been also going out and talking to small businesses. And actually, they'll put that into economic development. Actually, if you want to go to the next slide, Don. We've been doing some small business retention surveys. There was a lot of comments and questions about what businesses need and employees and time periods, you know, part-time and full-time. We're finding that it's really a worker problem, not a a job problem. People don't show up for interviews. They don't even call to say they're not showing up for an interview. And there's not a really one good answer. But the other thing we're finding through these surveys is just the plain cost of doing business is what's impacting our businesses. Things cost more, those costs pass down, a lot of the regulations coming out of the state are impacting that, putting some some handcuffs on what local businesses are able to do. We'll talk about the Shop Local program again as we look forward to next year. But also I want to point out, we have a really great resources page on our website. We have everything from the Small Business Administration's Guidebook for Small Businesses, the Downtown Vacaville Safe Business Program, How to Start Your Business in Vacaville. We have links to economic development as well as Choose Vacaville sites. So we have a really good, robust resource page that we update quite a bit. Next slide. Information Outreach Services, this is kind of a catch-all, I think, in our contract. But where this is, is sharing information with businesses. Top of the list you'll see is our Movers and Shakers Breakfast. Thank you, Mayor and city staff, for bringing the State of the City address to that event. We've been doing that for many, many years and packed the house. It's sold out every year. So that's that's a good thing for both of us. We also do a lot of business issues forums. Every other month, we have had everything from topics on homelessness to our new Assemblywoman Lori Wilson. Solano EDC has come to talk. We had a special listening session with Councilmember Silva, really focused on talking to businesses. And I invite all of you, if you would like our our partnership on doing that in your districts, we'd be love to do that. And we also do a lot of advocacy, not just locally, but at the state level. And we're starting to see our businesses actually ask us to be part of that process. We get, stay very close in touch with Cal Chamber, attend their annual capital summit. But everything from franchisee regulations to potential lawsuits on non-ADA websites. We're getting all of those type of topics across the board that we are now asked to kind of start at the top before they come down and impact our local businesses. So looking forward, looking forward, I have to also look back a little bit with you. So Shop Local, I was really, really excited when I got to put these stats up on the slide for you. Last November is when the Vacaville Chamber took over Shop Local. And we spent the first part of our time really improving the site. We, it was, we needed a better user interface on it. We needed to make it easier for businesses to join. We needed to make it more desirable for customers to come to it. So we added some categories like events. We added in some details to the restaurant pages where you can click right there for your takeout or delivery. We again added, there's coupons, there's services. But these numbers are amazing, I think, in not even a full year. New business participation up twenty-seven percent, new products increased by twenty-one percent, page views sixty percent, that means more customers are looking at it. And new site users, we've doubled those numbers. So I'm really happy to report that, and that is a big initiative going forward. Now that we we think we massaged the site to its best potential, now our goal is to get more people on it. That means more businesses and more customers too. So we'll be continuing those efforts. Couple of the other things, and these will be new going forward. We, Don and I have been talking, and we've also been working with Tim Merle at SBDC on an entrepreneurs event. We're still deciding what format this is gonna take. It's a work in progress. But the concept is to be entrepreneurship for new businesses and existing businesses. Because why are these schedules changing? Why are people not wanting to work full-time and part-time? It's because now the business models have to change to meet the people where they are, we think. So that means entrepreneurship in your existing business. So we're talking about a multi-day event, and this is a lot of ifs, so don't don't totally hold me to these. But we are looking at the week before Thanksgiving, this November. Maybe a multi-day event with a first day kind of more on the training, the marketing, how to build a business plan, and that such. The second day would be about capital. SBDC does a great Access to Capital Summit, so how do you fund your business? And then we'll take the third day and focus a little bit more on the innovation aspect of it. So that's in the works. Leadership Vacaville, we're really excited to bring back after a four-year hiatus that stopped because of COVID. But if you're not familiar with the leadership programs, they are one day a month, a class of anywhere from sixteen to twenty-four people that go for one day a month for nine months to learn about our city, to learn about our community, and also get business skills along the way. So there there'll be the traditional public speaking, marketing aspect, but we're gonna go, our our first day is a history day. So we're already planning a walking tour with the museum. We'll have a Travis Air We'll have a Travis Air Force Day. We'll have safety and fire, education, government. I'm, I'm told we might even do a mock city council meeting, so that will, I'm, I'm, we'll see how that one goes, but, and so lots of topics through it, and we're already, the application period's open. Our first class is in October, but we're still taking applications right now. So, good. And then if you know me, you know I love Lemonade Day. We talked about young, young people, getting them thinking about how they have jobs and how they move forward. We had our first Lemonade Day in May of this year. We had 158 registered learners, 95 families, 36 lemonade stands, 19 sweet spots where businesses offer their location, 10 event sponsors, eight local celebrity judges, and one very, very special day. This was, if you were any part of it, I know, Aaron, I think we shared a glass of lemonade at Playfair Park at one point. Downtown had five or six of the booths, but this is, again, part of that workforce development, part of that entrepreneur spirit. Get the kids young. It's truly a learning program, and they get learning modules with it, both in English or Spanish, so we're trying to reach a lot of demographic with that. We had judges, both our fire chief and police chief helped judge, Mary helped judge at one point. And then one of the great follow-up stories of this event is that we had a lady call us, and she was doing representative board of directors. I have 16 board members, and they represent all the levels of business, all sizes, all demographics, different areas of the city. And I just wanted to throw that list up there, and you have it in your packet so that you know if you know any of them and you want to talk to them about the Chamber and not just me.
I'm sorry that, that slide, this was a previous presentation, and the new presentation, I'm sorry, did not get loaded in time. So there is an action for the, for the council this evening. The council is being asked to accept and approve the Chamber of Commerce Program of Work Annual Progress Report and authorize the payment of the annual membership services fee of $57,738.60. And by simple motion, accept the Chamber's Annual Progress Report, approve the 2023-24 Chamber of Commerce Program of Work, and authorize the payment of the membership and services fee of $57,738.60.
Thank you for the verbal slide because I wasn't there. And I'm going to open up to the public real quick and see if there's any comment before I bring it back. Right now, we're seeing none. I will close it. Councilmember Silva?
Just, thank you for your leadership. I think the chambers, you know, there's a lot of chambers that face a lot of different challenges, but I think under your leadership and, you know, the board and obviously a lot of other folks support y'all, you know, send you guys up to succeed. I'm seeing a different, a difference in, in improvement in the membership numbers, so it's that. So thank, congratulations.
Thanks.
Keep up the good work. I am really excited about the entrepreneurial three-day summit, so I'm actually really hungry, well, figuratively hungry for that. So, you know, if there's any way to support that in, in some way, I'd be happy, be happy to. One thing that came up in that listening session was, and maybe this is more for Doc, Economic Development Director, Don Burris, but something that came up was about when new businesses get established within the town, really understanding what, what services there are, what programs there are. You know, for example, one thing that specifically came up was registering their security camera with PD or whatnot. And so is there, is, can we continue on the last like this? Can we continue to look into that and seeing how, whether the Chamber or, or the, sorry, downtown Vacaville, visit Vacaville, if there's some way that would be appropriate to disseminate that type of information?
Yes, as a matter of fact, Debbie and I have been working on trying to update the Doing Business in Vacaville brochure. It's been several years since that brochure was updated, so the information that you're requesting actually is part of that. So we've been trying to go through a lot of our old files to see, I actually did clean up some of that, that work so that we could just go to print, but we haven't been able to locate the actual files, so we may really need to basically start all over to create that new How to Start a Business guide in the city of Vacaville. So there is a resource page in that guide. I think I may have one left over that I could share with you all as an example, but that type of information is on the resource, resource page for new businesses coming into the city.
And just to clarify, the intention is that to be fully, fully accessible, whether a member or not?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And, and, and if the council remembers, you actually did approve ARPA funds so that we could actually reprint an updated version of the brochure.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that is, the existing one is digitally on our website and open to anyone who wants to come get the website. Another piece we're doing for new businesses, we get a new business license list from the city, and we've been sending out more of a Chamber-focused promotional piece. We're going to change that into more of a resource piece, so we'll be sending out something to every new business license person, business each month that we'll have a little bit more resources for.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I agree with Councilmember Silva, especially since you've gotten on board for the Chamber. I've seen good growth each year. I'm just looking forward to seeing it keep growing. I did want to reemphasize what you brought up about the CTE program. It's a very, very good program. I've worked at Chipperies for like the last four years doing those mock interviews, and it just keeps growing. I think the first year, I think we had like 12 or 15 kids we interviewed. This year is, I think it's 46, between the auto shop, the aeronautics program, now the culinary program that's there as well. And because it's growing, we can do all the interviews, so Moxie came down, Journey came down to interview the culinary students, and I think a couple of them actually got jobs from the mock interviews themselves. And what I love to see is like some positions we have difficulty filling in the city, like over in the corp yard where they're doing vehicle maintenance on like the fire engines, bringing some of those students that are coming to the auto shop because they're graduating with fully certificated to work on vehicles. So partnerships like that and reaching out to the base and all these other things, I'd like to see it grow because that program is growing every year. It's steadily increasing. Next year will probably be like 70, 80 kids that need to be interviewed, so should invite all the other council members out.
We always put the call out.
Yeah. So, yeah, appreciate your work with that and all the stuff you've taken care of. Thank you.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Thanks for everything you do. And Silva, can I talk to this next, and it kind of sparked my, my heart, entrepreneurship portion, that's, that's really huge. I think we talked off the record a few times about the passion, but seeing that and the emphasis you have on that really made a big difference. I mean, as the economy is shifting, there are so many small businesses that are business as usual that need to reshift the way they think and be small. There's so many brick and mortars, well, this is the way it's always been done. They need to shift, and they need to become entrepreneurs. There are so many ways that we need to really re-engage small businesses, say, you can't keep doing the way you've been doing it for 20 years, think same results. You need to look at tools, resources, the ability to restructure your small business to reach 3 billion people, not 30,000 in half of Vacaville. I think that's really important for the success of the downtown business district in the city of Vacaville, like really educating small businesses on, hey, you need to come to the shift and learn all the new tools, help you, and that would increase their capacity, that would increase their need to have employees that they're forced, they, they would be forced to have full-time employees. If they increase their operating expenses, operating procedures, would force them to be busy, would force them to hire, force them to pay more, force them to pay for benefits by their success. We all win. The capital is, is important. I think the hard part in California, starting a business, as soon as you started, trying to keep it open. I mean, everything you do, California has a law, and I think small businesses don't understand how hard it is not to violate one law by turning left or right. Education is really important, raising funds, and like really making sure businesses understand, once you're open, how do you stay open? How do you manage your books? At what point do you need help? Where's help? What's the difference of a line of credit and a loan? What's the cost and benefit of each? Like, we really need help. Like, that's so important, the education of capital. And then now you're open, stay open, not, not getting sued by, because not, not all employees are nice. And staying open by not having frivolous lawsuit or some problem, and making sure that they are, they have legal, legal counsel, at least the resources. When you said that, it really made me feel happy because it's a shame how companies failed because they didn't know what they didn't know. And I think it's really important, so that I, I would love to motion to approve and help you find more small businesses, but at the right time or...
I'll save, I'll save your motion. And then I'll come back to you since you're, you're excited about it. It's exciting. But before that, Councilmember Chap?
Thank you. Thank you. Good seeing you today, and you're happy. Question. The lemonade stands. Someone depleted my funds, so I couldn't, I didn't have any left when I received the announcement. I won't call it solicitation or anything like that, however...
Opportunity.
All right. Anyway, on that slide, there were 196 that were interested, however, you only hit 36.7. Can you share?
Yeah. The registered learners, they start the process, there's interest, they, but they might not get complete through the, the education piece of the program to actually get to their, their business. 95 families, most stands had two to sometimes three kids from a family at the stand, so that would be why so many more, less stands. So there were, there are partnerships, but a lot of times it's, it's kind of like anything, they didn't finish what they started, you know, so, but the interest is there. It was peaked. Our goal was 30 our first year, so we exceeded our goal. And I do want to go back, Councilman Silva and Councilmember Wiley, you did both contribute. You were able to, your measure M, and I do want to thank city staff because we didn't fit in the box of the event portal, and staff really worked with us to make sure that, that we can make this happen. So I was, forgot to say that.
Great.
Thank you very much, and it was a success because it demonstrated what it means to be a young entrepreneur and get that in the mindset on how to do it. So watching it just showed how to be successful, and it was a fun event and a fun program, too, so looking forward to future ones. And Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, I'll keep it brief. First off, I just wanted to thank you for just finding ways to get our community involved in business and better them. We've, this is, I want to say at least my third presentation on, on this, and I can see the effort that you are putting in to our kids, to folks that are new into business, the young professionals, the established businesses. I mean, you're really, it's, it's obvious that you're going out of your way to just find whatever group of people you can help, depending upon where they're at in their journey for a career. So thank you for that. I enjoyed the membership drive. That was one of the most fun events that I've had, and I want to second Councilmember Ritchie's motion to approve.
Well, thank you very much. And so with that, we're going to then go with a, the motion that, that Burris has already read, so you don't have to read it again. So we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye. I have another motion.
I know what you're going to motion.
Can we motion to move 9D next, please?
Well, let's, let's talk about what the, the, the timing of the agenda is, Mr. City Manager. What time is it? It's 9:18. Do we anticipate to get through?
Yes, I think we'll get through the agenda just...
Okay. So, all right. So thank you very much. Item 9C. Manager?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This next item before you is a resolution to allow the filing of an application to the MTC for our annual allocation of Transit Development Act funds. We have a whole team here led by Brian McClain, your Public Works Director, and I'll turn it over to him.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council. Tonight's presentation will be conducted by Lori Damasa, our Transit Coordinator, and Rick, or, excuse me, Jake Allred, our Assistant Director of Public Works for the Maintenance Division.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. This item is seeking authorization to file an application with the Metropolitan Transportation Commission for allocation of Transportation Development Act funds for fiscal year 2324 in the amount of $9,388,357 for Vacaville City Coach Transit Operations and Capital The City Coach program is funded through three sources, passenger fares, the Federal Transit Administration, and state funds through the Transportation Development Act. The Transportation Development Act funds are generated through local sales and fuel tax. The Metropolitan Transportation Commission is the Metropolitan, the City Coach Special Services Program, which is our paratransit program, the local taxi script program, and our contribution to the countywide intercity taxi script program. The fiscal year 2324 TDA operations request is $2,778,357. TDA funding for the City Coach capital needs are for the following eight projects. Project number one is the Electrification Charging System Infrastructure, its improvements. The total TDA capital request for fiscal year 2324 is $6,610,000. For the environmental impact, this action before you of seeking authorization to file a TDA application is exempt from CEQA. The Electrification Charging System Infrastructure Capital Project will be evaluated prior to project initiation as this project is managed through the Public Works Capital Improvement The MTC has allocated 5.7 million for fiscal year 2324. The recommendation for fiscal year 2324 totals $9,388,357. $2,778,357 is for operations of transit services, and 600 and, $6,610,000 is for capital projects. The remaining balance will remain in the city's TDA account for maintenance of transit infrastructure and vehicles. Due to City Coach being a self-funded program, there is no general fund impact, and the strategic goal is goal number four, to maintain effective and efficient services. And the recommendation is by simple motion to adopt the subject resolution.
Thank you for the presentation. Looking for any questions from the council? Not seeing that, I'm going to open up to the public for comment. Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council. And so now I'm going to open it up for, there was questions, now we can discuss it. So were you gonna?
I was going to make a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion approved.
Hold on a second, hold on a second. Vice Mayor Wiley?
I have just one quick question. So this is an application, but are we pretty sure that our application will be granted, or is there a chance that we won't get this money?
Uh, yes, we're pretty sure this is...
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Just one to enhance that just a, a, a little bit more. These funds are state sales tax funds that come down from Solano County, and then they basically sit into a bank at the city of Vacaville, the Local Transportation Fund Bank. So this application is just a formality to be able to allow us to be able to access those funds and withdraw those funds from our bank.
Thank you very much, and Councilmember, Councilmember Silva, you were going to make a motion?
Motion approved.
And we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving right along. Now we're to item 9D.
Mayor, members of the city council, I'm actually going to just mention for the benefit of the council and the audience that items 9D and 9E are kind of related. We will need separate actions on these two items, and obviously we're treating separate items, but they are related. The first one being related to the final map for a portion of Lower Lagoon Valley, Neighborhood K, Phase 1, and the Business Village Large Lot map. We have Brian Oxley from our Public Works Department doing this particular part of the presentation, then we'll get a portion at the, which I'll go ahead and introduce at that time.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm here to present the Lower Lagoon Valley Neighborhood K, Phase 1, and Business Village Large Lot final map. In 2005, city council approved the vesting tentative map for the Lagoon Valley Development Project. The purpose of the tentative map is to show the design and improvements being proposed by a developer for a subdivision. A developer may choose that, may choose that the map be approved as a vesting tentative map, which is utilized to establish the city standards to which the development will be held. In 2014, city council approved the Lower Lagoon Valley Large Lot map as shown here. A large lot map is a map that is prepared to create large lots that can be further subdivided at some point in the future. Over the last two years, the developer has been constructing major infrastructure in the... Over the last two years, the developer has been constructing major infrastructure in Lagoon Valley, including the sanitary sewer lift station, the water booster pump station, water storage reservoir, and underground utilities. And over the last year, the developer has been conducting grading operations and constructing Lagoon Valley Boulevard and the Neighborhood K infrastructure improvements. Recently, the developer sub, submitted a new large lot final map as shown. The map was reviewed by city staff and was determined to be in conformance with the vesting tentative map that was approved back in 2005. Here's a side-by-side view of the 2014 map and the current map. The parcels shown in the green box on the 2014 map have not been revised and are not part of the final map, but are still legal parcels. The main difference between the two maps are in relation to the commercial area and Neighborhood K, Phase One, shown in the red box on the map on the right side. As part of the 2014 Large Lot Final Map, the streets listed here were dedicated to the city by the developer. These roadways were originally intended to serve the Lower Lagoon Valley Development Project. However, these streets were never constructed or in, and are in conflict with the proposed final map. Being considered for approval, therefore, the developer has requested the city vacate these roadways. In accordance with the Public Streets, Highways and Service Easements Vacation Law, these five streets may be summarily vacated because the roadways were never constructed and have not been used for the purpose for which they were dedicated. And furthermore, the roadways were originally dedicated at no cost to the city and will therefore be vacated at no cost in accordance with the city's right-of-way abandonment policy. Staff's recommendation is that by simple motion, the city council, the City of Vacaville, adopt the subject resolution for the Lower Lagoon Valley Final Map and the resolution to summarily vacate excess right-of-way. And this concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the presentation. Uh, not seeing any immediate questions, I'm going to open up for the public to comment. Please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and, uh, council and public and staff. I think I get three minutes, right? And I will try to, let me know if I go beyond that, because what I have to say is both what I'm, you're addressing right now, item 9D, and it relates to, again, 9 and 9E, okay? And I'm looking forward to hearing.
Yeah, just keep it on the 9D.
Exactly. It, it really doesn't change much. But this is my point. I'm gonna voice my opinion of what I think of what you're doing there. And I say it because I don't want to keep silent. I understand silence is a way of almost going along with what you're doing, and I do not support whatever you're doing or the developer, whoever's doing that. And I speak from years of experience, I think you know me. And my name is, by the way, Roberta Valdez, and I'm a concerned citizen, that's why I'm here, you know? And I know a lot of people who are not here today, but also who are still interested in what you're doing there. So what I'm gonna say to you, this project, as far as I'm concerned, whether it's the developer donated that land or not, whatever is reasons, I don't think has, uh, has no business being built where it's being built. As far as I'm concerned, and I've spoken to your staff before, some of them are here, they were very cooperative, and I appreciate their time and insight. As far as I'm concerned, this project is already having an impact to the wildlife and to the, um, you know, and to, especially to the lower, the, I don't know, you know it, but it's called, originally Edward Markan called it historically, the Little Lake. And it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's called the Little Lake of Lower Lagoon Valley. So, anyway. And as far as I'm concerned, it's already having an impact because, uh, as far as I've heard from your staff, you've already removed some trees that were built to widen that road, that Lagoon Valley Road. And it's, you know, whether it was part of the agreement or not, you still had, you removed those trees. And I do know from fact and from Audubon people that that is used a lot for, uh, different birds, different riparian, uh, species. And so it is having an impact as we speak. And probably more. I have not heard anything about replacing the trees within the Lagoon Valley Park or anything. I just heard that you removed them. There wasn't very much comments on that. Let me know if I go beyond three, because I can wait to give you the.
It's coming to an end.
Okay. The other thing is, I, I like to think that this project has no historical value, but I'm not too certain on that. I don't know about you, but I've read a lot about Lagoon Valley, and especially from Edward Markan, who grew up there. He's our native son, well-known poet in history. I recommend you get to know him. If, when you're doing all the decisions. He had a lot to say about California and Lagoon Valley, I'm sure. He does.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, did I go beyond the three? Okay, I'll continue. To be continued. Thank you.
Appreciate the questions and the comments. Evening.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Fred Grimm. I'm the, uh, manager of Triad Lagoon Valley LLC, who's the owner and developer of the property. And, um, just want to introduce myself and, uh, say that we've appreciated, uh, working with the city and you've, you've, uh, through the process of getting this entitled back in 2005, we had an incredible number of steps we had to take and safeguards that we had to follow, and we've done, uh, what we were asked to do. And we've done what we said we'd do. So we appreciate, uh, you adopting this and moving forward, and just wanted to make myself available if there's any questions.
Thank you. Bring it back to the council for any comments. Councilmember Silva?
Yeah, thank you. Just two questions. Um, I'll start with, directed to the city manager. Is this, would, does this fall, this particular item, excuse me, fall within the development agreement, uh, from 2021, I believe?
Yes, this project is entirely consistent with the original approval and was within the scope. It's simply a modification based on the finality of the design of the.
And then the second question is, what is our tree removal process and replacement?
So I, I can't give you the specifics on this particular project, but I can tell you for sure that as part of the entitlement process that this project went through, every other project that goes through the city process, there is a tree permit, uh, removal process, a restoration process, a mitigation process. This particular project has a very lengthy and involved, um, mitigation plan, um, for all the work that was being done in that area. Um, there is lots of mitigation measures, including require, uh, biologists and, and so forth to, and arborists to review the work that's being completed to make proper manner and in accordance with the conditions of approval.
Uh, to your knowledge, is there a timeline in which a tree that's removed, uh, can be replaced or needs to be replaced? Is there a?
I might have to turn that one over to the planning department in terms of, uh, the particulars in terms of timing, but usually, um, there's a requirement that's tied to the conditions of approval with the map, and so with the placement landscaping so that we can inspect it. It's not left out there to be, you know, no deadline for it to be completed.
All right. Uh, thank you.
Not seeing any other comments from the council. I, I certainly want to appreciate for the, you know, your presentation, and this has been a long time coming for the City of Vacaville. If us may have been in different roles, I know myself included was not on this council, none of us were here. You were in high school. And it, it's been, um, it's been discussed and debated for generation. And, uh, there's been a lot of work leading to today and the final map, and I just want to say, you know, thank you to staff, and thank you to Triad and, and all the work to, to make this what it appears to, to be. The infrastructure seems like there's a lot of, a lot of work being done behind the scenes, but, um, I had the chance to see it up close, uh, last, it would have been last summer or late, late summer, early fall. The amount of infrastructure and the, the care and concern for the, the environment around there is going to be very unique gem for Vacaville. So I'm very supportive of where we are at at this point. I know there's been a lot of tension over the years, but this, this is a moment in time to move forward. So just wanted to say. Councilmember Richie?
Yeah. An A2, motion to approve and adopt the subject resolution.
You have a motion, and do we have a second? You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We'll move on to item 9E.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is, uh, the second part of the adjustment for, uh, Lagoon Valley, and this relates to modifying the community facilities. Correspond with the, um, stations. Ken Matsumiya, your, uh, finance director is here to make.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. As the city manager just mentioned, this item is directly related to the action that was just taken on the previous item. Um, the following item is the first step in the CFD annexation process to agree the Lagoon Valley CFD boundary to the final map that was just approved. So before getting to the presentation, I did want to call out a correction to one of the attachments that was included with the staff report posted online. And so this attachment, which I'll magnify, um, is part of the rate and method of apportionment, uh, document for improvement area number two. If you were to view the staff report online, it's page 56 of the attachment. And, uh, the document showing on the screen is the corrected attachment, and the difference between what was posted online and this document is this last row, right here, that shows the 1.7 million, the amount that was originally, uh, is on the original document online, didn't include, um, the, the revenues for the non-residential property. Now that has no bearing on tonight's action at all. But, um, wanted to apologize for that oversight and just mention that that's going to be corrected, um, online as well. So jumping into the actual presentation and the item tonight, starting off with some background, uh, the CFD number 13, Lower Lagoon Valley, was established, uh, by council in 2021 over a series of four meetings. This is the CFD formation process, requires a number of legislative actions, including a public hearing and landowner election. CFDs are a financing tool allowed in state law that funds the installation of public improvements and, and/or ongoing services within identified area. Special taxes levied on taxable property within the, the district's boundaries, and then revenue received is used to fund the CFD's authorized public facilities or the services. Given the size of the Lagoon Valley project and phase development, the CFD was formed with two improvement areas, improvement area number one, and improvement area number two. And the use of improvement areas is common in larger projects like Lagoon Valley that are going to be built out over a number of years and is a way of grouping the parcels of land within the CFD according to the development phasing plan. And so when a CFD is formed, a boundary map is recorded in which, uh, defines the region to be included in the CFD district, and then also identifies, uh, which parcel, parcels of lands belong in which improvement areas, when improvement areas are used like they are in the Lower Lagoon Valley. And one thing I want to note, and kind of, uh, the reason why the, the, the map needs to be adjusted is because each parcel of land within a CFD boundary can only be in a single improvement area in order to be taxed appropriately. So this, uh, map right here is the original boundary map that was, uh, approved back in 2021. And so the, the dashed, um, black line is the CFD boundary itself, you can see throughout the map. And then, um, for the, the parcels of land that have a diagonal line, a single diagonal line pattern, those are the ones that, uh, the parcels of land that are in improvement area one, um, back in 2021. The parcels of land that have the crosshatching, so the, kind of the cross-line pattern, those are the parcels of land that were in improvement area two back in 2021. And so the area to focus on for tonight is going to be, uh, in this section right here, that business village, um, area. And that's where you're going to see kind of the, the, the land change that Brian had talked about previously. So the purpose of this annexation item, as I mentioned, is to conform the boundaries of the CFD improvement areas to the Neighborhood K and Business Village Large Lot Final Map that was just approved. And with the approval of the final map, there are parcels of land that are in both. Right here, the one on the left is the, uh, the boundary map that I showed two slides ago on 2000, um, from 2021. And then, um, as you can see on the right, uh, is what has changed is the section right here where there are new parcels now and those, all those new parts, all those parcels have to fit neatly into one of the improvement areas. And so that is the, the change that's, um, part of the action. So if the resolution of intention is approved this evening, the following slide summarizes the next steps that would occur over the, uh, three council meetings. And so tonight is that first meeting where we're taking, uh, requesting council to take action to adopt the resolution of intent and setting the date for the public hearing. The second step in the process would occur at the September 12th council meeting, and that involves conducting the public hearing related to the resolution of some intent, uh, conducting a special election of the subject landowners, and then considering the second set of legislative actions. If the, the landowner election is successful at the meeting, then council will be asked to adopt finalizing the annexation of the affected properties, and then at the same time removing those properties from their current improvement areas, so that they're only in one. And then the first reading of the ordinance, levying the special tax on the annexed parcels would also occur at this meeting. And then the very final action would occur on September 26th, and that would be adopting the ordinance levying the special tax. So tonight's recommendation is by simple motion to adopt the subject resolutions, and that concludes the presentation. Be happy to take questions.
Thanks, Ken. Any questions on the council? And open up to the public? On down?
I have to repeat, who am I? Respectfully to all of you. Anyway, um, part B, same as I started. I like to think that this particular area that the project's being built, and I know you're addressing this particular area within the project. That you have, still have to go through the public process. Anyway, um, I like to think that there's no historical value, but I'm not too sure, and I'll tell you why. Again, I'm, but basically tonight referring to Edward Markan's book, if you don't, haven't read it, I recommend you read it. That is a history, that is, as far as I'm concerned, the Bible to Lagoon Valley. It's, it's a not, it's a wonderful book, and he wrote it in 1923, and he talks about his childhood there, what he saw with a penis. Anyway, um, but again, one thing that caught my eye, when he was saying, he talked about having rodeos there. Everybody knows about Cabo Rodeo. We have a lot in California, and I'm glad to hear that the African-American are doing that. Black eye, have a lot of respect for them and admiration. But anyway, they, uh, I still don't know where it was located, somewhere there. Maybe the historians know. I wasn't here, unfortunately, 18, 1850. None of us were here. Anyway, I hope it doesn't get lost. But anyway, um, as far as I'm concerned, you might be building right on that area where he had the rodeos. Instead of having, uh, buildings, I like to see trees that everybody enjoys seeing because of the wildlife, that that area is attracting right now with the rains that we've had. All the trees are blooming, all the birds are coming, all the wildlife is gone. Let's not kill it, okay? And I respect, again, your position of, uh, development. But anyway, the other thing, in addition to that, I want to say to you, and I don't, I have to say that the Peña Doby's doing a wonderful job, uh, those people, you, you saw what they did this weekend, probably for the Native Americans. But anyway, uh, as far as, uh, in addition, as far as I know, this project was built specifically for an economic reason, to be able to provide housing for those people who are making a hundred thousand and more. Who are they? The people who work for the biotech. Now, you can correct me on this, but I don't think I'm wrong, because I heard it from the reporter, and they're, they're pretty precise. They said something about Genentech leaving Vacaville. Again, I don't know what the story is. But you still continue building there. So who is it for? Uh, that's my question. And Mr. Silva, thank you for asking that about tree removal. I do appreciate that. But the other thing I'll say, as far as I'm concerned, I'm speaking for myself, and I know other people. I have known them for 20 years. And I will say, uh, I'll still be watching what you're doing down there, because it.
Opposed? Done. The motion passes. We'll now move on to item 9F.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Um, I'm very excited to present this to the city council, uh, for your consideration tonight. Tonight, we've, uh, presented several items to you related to, uh, new strategies related to.
Strategic Plan Goal Number Four, which is maintain effective and efficient services. And Initiative 4C, which is build, plus the employee side of things, there's also the investment in the community. There's also the investment in the community. Sixty-six percent of our employees live right here in Vacaville. And if you've seen any of the what's or why posts on social media lately that feature staff, you might have noticed that a common theme is that there is a strong commitment to serving their community, which is our community, Vacaville. The volunteer program that we're proposing tonight falls under the umbrella of the COV Connect Outreach Program, which the city manager mentioned, which was created to provide a service based based approach to help connect the city with the local community. And some of the ways we're already doing that, connecting with the community and COV Connect is through the Make a Difference Day cleanup events. In that connecting with the community and COV Connect is through the Make a Difference Day cleanup events, neighborhood associations, and the District Commander Program. So some of the program components, kind of how it works, and I got a little asterisk here on the first bullet because there was an error in the staff report. So eligible employees would receive a bank of up to eight program hours per fiscal year. The staff report said calendar year, so that's the only difference there. It's a fiscal year. Program hours can be used to volunteer at events and activities that directly benefit the Vacaville community, sponsored by local nonprofit schools, other nonprofit organizations, and program hours would be paid at the employee's base rate of pay at the time their program hours are used. Program hours cannot be carried over year to year, cannot be cashed out, and cannot be used as a substitute for any other type of leave. The pilot program period will be, if you approve it tonight, would be September first of this year through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four. Eligible employees include really any full-time employee, regular, probationary, and limited term full-time employees, so anybody that's full-time. And the pilot program period will really will allow us to get started with the program, see what works, what we might need to tweak to make it more effective. And eligibility, examples of eligible volunteer activities include things like food banks, animal rescues, organizations that provide temporary housing or support services, youth services, and volunteering in Vacaville classrooms. Examples of ineligible activities would include attending professional religious or personal interest activities or any activity where the employee receives any type of monetary compensation other than their city paycheck. And we're also working on creating a list of local nonprofits that have volunteer opportunities available so we can share those with staff who might need a little help with that. And so the benefits of the program, there's a lot of them. So investment in the Vacaville community, which we'd love to see, building connections between staff and charitable and community benefit organizations, increases to employee engagement and satisfaction, which promotes retention, which we're looking to do, raises the profile of the city, which can improve attraction of prospective applicants, and it provides valuable volunteer capacity in the community. We know that not all of our employees would take advantage of this program, but if even ten percent of the full-time staff volunteered eight hours in the community, that would be about five hundred and twenty-five hours of service invested in the community. If twenty-five percent volunteer, that's over thirteen hundred hours. That's a lot of time. So tonight's recommendation is that by simple motion, you adopt the subject resolution, and I'm happy to answer any questions or take any comments you might have.
Thank you for the presentation. Anytime that we can promote the community activities with our staff, especially in the area of volunteerism, fully supported. So I'm gonna, let's see, Councilmember Stockton?
Also very excited to see how active our city staff is with helping out our community in a variety of ways. The COV Connect has been pretty amazing to see the transformation in just a small area. So I'm excited to 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 see this kind of opportunity grow and spread throughout the community and other areas. Does this also include salaried employees?
Yes.
It's everybody, right?
Every, all full-time.
All full-time employees. Okay, that was it. That's all I got.
Councilmember Chapman?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I like the program and support it wholeheartedly. I have a question for the mayor. I had mentioned
Well, mayor or city manager?
I'm sorry, sir.
That's okay.
Was that a, wait a minute, was that a, or?
Do you have a question for the city manager?
I have a question for the city manager. I'm sorry. Mayor, wow. Okay. When we, I inquired about item number one and overtime language that was written, did you have a chance to check on that?
Ken confirmed that what the language that is included in there is to say that the hours that you're working, put it for count towards your work week hours.
Right.
But it does not mean that they're resulting in overtime hours. So if you take time, if you take a full eight hours off to go do a volunteer activity, if you're still working your full work week. And so if you do happen to have greater than your forty hours in that week, it doesn't penalize you, and you would be compensated for the overtime that you worked.
Okay. Will that second sentence need to be revised in the language in the draft that we received?
We can possibly add some clarification, but I think
I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand the logic, but the way it's written, it may, someone could take you to task on that. I'm just thinking
That's never happened before.
But this is the first time. Oh, you're right. This is you got, okay, I give you one.
We're good.
That's another bucket.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I did have something else, but he caused me to forget, so go ahead.
Councilmember Silva?
Appreciate the, I mean, I know we, thank you for the presentation, appreciate the program, like the concept, like the opportunity for staff to to have an opportunity to build within the work schedule, to be able to engage communities in different ways. My experience and observations is that when we work together, we actually start to understand each other better, and I think that'll translate to improve service, improve perspectives and our ability to, you know, widen our perspectives of who we serve and the complexities of our community. So I think a lot of times it can be, we get distracted when we get in our in our niche and, you know, having more perspectives just enriches our ability to serve our public. The only issue I I have with this is the term volunteerism. And so I'm, I absolutely want to support this. I don't like to get caught up in in terms too much, but I think in this sense, to me, I'm curious why can we call it something, can we change the term volunteerism to community service or giving back or something like that?
Certainly could. I think volunteerism was chosen because it really is a volunteer program. Employees can choose to do it or not, and sometimes there's a connotation with community service that maybe it would be mandated or not so volunteerism, volunteer focused. But we could certainly
Yeah, so
Possibly.
Sure. As quick as I can, thirty seconds, you start the timer. There you go. I think it's important because if the goal is to help an underserved community with different perspectives, I will say that if people know that people are doing it for pay, it changes the dynamic. And so if our goal is to build trust and build a rapport, if the perspective is, oh, you're getting paid, then you're only here because you're getting paid. And I think if we just, to me, I think just being honest and transparent about it in that sense, I think in that, with that respect, I think volunteerism, what I don't want, I think that's can be misleading or interpreted to be misleading. And I think, I think it's important we build trust, and I don't want to see this this program being faulted or have a negative perspective for that. So that's where I'm coming with that, from that perspective.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yeah, Councilmember Silva brought one of my concerns out, because volunteerism is generally, you're doing it without compensation. And so most organizations that I've worked for that have done this type of program, worked for about three that have had something similar to this, they usually just market it as like another paid day off. And the reason why they go with that instead of an hourly, which I spoke with city manager about this earlier, is a lot of people work different schedules. For example, somebody PD one deal where they're working a ten or eleven hour shift or longer. If, say, they get signed off to the eight-hour shift, are they expected to go back and work for last two hours of their shift, even though it's probably covered by somebody? So it's a little bit different. Instead of just saying, hey, you have your day off, you get compensated for your day's worth of pay if you worked those hours. Because like Gregory, you and myself, we go work at the Veterans Hall on the holidays, where they're like seven o'clock in the morning, sometimes we don't finish till like four or five in the afternoon. So, well, there is some volunteer time there. There's a lot of different schedules, a lot of times. I've been to very few places where you just volunteer for like an hour or two. It's usually that you're there for quite a few hours, even like the COV events that you guys do with the neighborhood cleanups. You guys are out there most of the morning taking care of it. So, yeah, I'd like to see the language for the volunteerism change as well as like possibly, I mean, this is a good pilot to start with to see if it works, but most other places I've done this at, they don't do it by hours, they just do it by day, compensated by whatever their normal workday looks like.
I will say, we wanted to provide some flexibility to staff and supervisors to make it work and make it as accessible to as many employees as possible, and that's why we had it, you know, to be a minimum at least two hours, but we wanted to give some flexibility there.
Yeah, I definitely see, like I said, it's a good pilot, see if it works. I just, the only way I've seen it in other ways is usually by day. But, yeah, this does a lot more flexibility than that, but also makes things a lot more complicated for you guys.
Doesn't have to be.
Yep, thank you.
Vice Mayor Wiley?
Thanks for the information. I also think that it's a good program, and it will be good for the employees who want to be able to help in some ways and also, you know, to build flexibility and and to build choices that we have in the workforce. And because it's a pilot program, we can kind of tweak some of the issues. And just like one thing is, I like having a minimum and a maximum so that people know that and making it very clear, it's only on your workday. So if you work on the holiday that you weren't already working, you couldn't turn those hours in and say, oh, I'm taking Monday off because I worked on the Saturday at the event. It's only during your regular work time. And one thing to maybe think about, too, is if two people are working in a similar position and someone says, oh, I want to give my eight hours to someone who's already had their eight hours, because I take, I'll cover their job for them, you know, could we, would we allow that? Would we not? And sometimes there have been issues where people have been time approved, and then something comes up in the workplace that's an emergency, so then they would have to understand that even though my time was approved and I have it signed off by my department head, if they call me that morning and say, you know, we really need you in here today, could you please come, then it would, your first, your first responsibility is to the city if it's an issue that that can't be, you know, wasn't anticipated, but you're needed there today. So as long as people understand all those things as well. So that's why it's a pilot, it's worth looking at, and thanks for your work on it.
Real quick, I heard a question in there as far as someone sharing their hours. It might be
I think we're not prepared to address that right now. I think we'd like to get the program started and see how it goes.
I just wanted to make that comment out there for right now. Right, this is, it's by employee, two hours minimum, eight hours max. We're trying to do this. I just don't want that to be lost in confusion because it sounds like a question. And Councilmember Chapman, you remembered your question?
Yes. Habitat for Humanity. We have a couple of those scheduled for the community with net fall within this community support program.
I believe it would.
Okay. And what I was Googling, I was on my phone, I admit it, and I was Googling, Googling volunteerism, and it could be so, the social responsibility program, community support. Those are synonyms that were given, so.
Always interesting.
Yeah.
I don't have any further questions, but I am going to open up to the public. Any comment? Not that I'm seeing any of this late hour. Back to the council, and it's a pilot program, and so you're going to be able to, you're going to have the responsibility. Obviously, it's being managed in the city manager's office to start with. These are usually the ones that end up in HR at some point, but this is, this is good for, this is good for Vacaville. Mr. City Manager?
I think, and I appreciate the the thoughtfulness and the comments of how to market this because it is about connecting with the community, building trust and so forth. And I think that from my perspective, and and I'm kind of sharing this with my team for the first time tonight, is that the way I envision this is that what you see before you now is the working title internally, but in my mind, it's all part of that COV Connect brand. And so when we go out into the 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 community under this function or this pilot program, it's going to be part of that COV Connect umbrella, which is all about engaging with our with our community at every level. And so I think that that just continues to send that message and keep it simple, keep it focused on connect, making connections between City Hall and our community.
Good clarification. Thank you. And do I have a motion?
Yes.
So I have a motion in a second? You have a motion in a second? You want a motion to
Friendly, sorry, we haven't done this in a while. Friendly amendment, motion like a friendly amendment. Uh, friendly motion is to, I'm happy to approve, but I just ask that staff change the term volunteerism to something of their choice.
Giving staff the the flexibility to explore that.
Community service.
I'm telling you. Well, it's your motion. Stay with that?
I'm okay. Leave it up to the, we leave it up to the city manager.
So we have, we have a, an accepted friendly motion in a second? All in favor? Aye. Well, let's make that successful. So thank you very much.
Yes.
And with that, it's item ten, reports of the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have just a couple of real quick items that I wanted to bring to your attention. First, a follow-up on the item that we talked about at the beginning of the meeting about the battery storage project, and I mentioned that we have information on our website, and I'm hoping Cory's going to put that up there for me. This is the actual page, and the one thing that I wanted to confirm is that we do, in fact, have a date scheduled for that community meeting. It is seventh, between six to eight P M. We are currently trying to finalize the the location for that particular event, but we're trying to secure the large room out at the Solano Community College because of the proximity to the neighborhood and just the size of the facility and so forth. So we will confirm all of that information in the next week, but residents, if they're interested, could follow this page, get all the updates on the project, and they can also sign up to receive direct email notices about anything that's coming out related to this project. So please look to that site if you have any questions. The second item is related to our biotech efforts, and there was quite a bit of discussion about that subject tonight. It was called our North Star effort in one presentation. And before I get into the particulars of this, I do want to say and share with the council that we know that this is a very high and important priority for the council and for our community, and a lot of effort has gone into this. And we plan to bring back a update presentation on this and our advanced manufacturing strategies to the council in the coming months. Quick side note, I also plan on bringing to the council an update on our downtown specific plan efforts because you heard some of that tonight as well with the business recovery strategies and about placemaking downtown. So we're going to be bringing those both back to council in the next coming months. But what I wanted to share with you tonight is you take a look at the screen, this this piece of property should be familiar to the council. This is kind of the hub, the new hub, if you will, of our bio manufacturing strategy. You can see some familiar names on there, Agonist, Polaris, and Transwestern, also known as Axiom Point. We also have across the way Vacaville, our latest addition, our LifeSpace Labs, who began operating their life science facility over there in June. What is new on here, which I'm happy to present to the council ahead of the press release that's going out tomorrow, is that we have a a new addition to that right there in the middle. It is LG Kim, and yes, they are from the very large corporation LG Corp. They have decided to acquire fifteen acres here in Vacaville because they are very excited through the entitlement process just as quickly so that they can begin bringing what they are bringing to our community as well. So very exciting news. This basically almost completes that area as you see, and that's something that we need to, you know, talk about as we go forward, and that will be part of the conversation and bring that back because, as you heard in the recovery strategy, the availability of land to be ahead of the industry is very important. So I appreciate all the efforts that our economic development team is doing. Great work, and I also very much appreciate the council's continued support for this program because it's a lot of valuable results. So thank you.
Thank you. Very exciting opportunities. And so that press release will go out tomorrow. This is the sneak preview of it, late at night.
No surprises.
Yeah. And just a lot of thanks to hardworking staff behind the scenes. I know from an economic development standpoint, as a city, being in the driver's seat is the difference of where we're at today. So credit where credit's due and really forward thinking even during a pandemic. So we're on, we're good territory and pretty exciting to see what's coming. So you'll, you'll let us know when that'll come back, but probably in a few months. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Silva.
Thank you. Actually, just a follow-up question for the city manager. Can you elaborate more on, so I know Roche is looking, you know, having a different change in their business model. LG Kim, were we the only option for them? Can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
If I, were we the only option for, that LG Kim was looking at?
Yes.
Well, they, they took a look at a lot of different places, but they saw what we had to offer, the ecosystem that was being produced with our strategy. The, they were very pleased with the other players that were purchasing out there and what is happening out here. And, you know, the, the news about Genentech and their, or Roche's business plan, you know, that certainly was, was a hit for, for, you know, the company obviously and the employees there. And, you know, staff met with the leadership there. And one of the things that we wanted to make sure is that, you know, as they were going forward with their new plan, that how would that impact what you saw on that particular map and those, you know, those commitments and those entitlements and so forth? And our economic development team, it just so happened that that news, when it came out, was right before the Bio International event that took place in Boston. Once again, we had amazing interest from all over the world at that, at that conference. It was, I, I shared in, in, in presentations that, you know, in our very first Bio International in 2019, the questions were, where's, where's Vacaville? And what are they doing? Now it's like, okay, where's their booth and what are they doing now? And that was the same thing in this most recent conference. And even more importantly, we got reaffirmed commitments from those, those industries that you saw on that map that are still very excited and anxious to move forward with their investments in Vacaville. And so you'll start to see some of that work. And right now, Transwestern is finalizing some, you know, inquiries from specific firms and companies. So more than likely, you'll begin to see some actual construction here, hopefully before the end of the year, if not at the very beginning of next year.
I like that report much better, just saying. No, but in all seriousness, I know there's a, there's a tremendous amount of work that goes into each, to all of this. And so thank you, your leadership and your staff for everything, all that they do. I know it's not just one individual or a couple of individuals. It really does take a team effort. So, thank you. So real quick.
So we'll go to the reports of the city?
Yeah.
Or the council?
That was part of it.
All right.
So number two is, not going to comment much on things that have been said in open comment. A lot of it does weigh heavy on my soul. But what I do, what I am curious to learn more about is the concept of hate speech. And I don't know if that's something that tomorrow for a study session, is that, if that's something that we can get a little bit more perspective on and what falls under, under that while still respecting individuals' First Amendment speech? And if tomorrow is not appropriate during our study session, happy to have entertained another time for that. But I leave that up to council. Thank you.
Want to comment?
Well, I, Councilmember Silva, and I talked a little bit about that briefly before. And I think tomorrow is a great opportunity to introduce the topic, you know, as we discussing council priorities. And then, you know, we'll follow your lead in terms of, you know, where you prioritize that. And then that's something certainly that the council's looking for. I can work with Melinda and her team in the city attorney's office back to the council at a, at a future date.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Chapman?
I would just like to only, oh, share a couple of things. Last week, I held a meet of a town hall gathering, not a town hall meeting, but a town hall gathering with Palomo Gardens residents. And I had, there were parents and children in attendance, and I had an adult, Ellis Freed, to work with the young people and ask them the same questions that I was, that I posed to the adults in attendance. And there was some interesting comments that came from the children, from the young folks, about what they desire. One of them in particular that really hit me hard, at heart, was they would like to see more grass. Imagine in the area where they're living, they're looking at wanting, wanting to beautiful, bring, I don't know, but it just, you know, when you have that come from a young person, they're speaking of the conditions in which they live. They would like to see it sproosed up, in essence. Okay, so anyway, just wanted to share, and you'll hear more about that later. Rika does a wonderful job, and I want to thank she and the team. I mean, it was because of her efforts, really. The other thing I just want to share, we all receive, or you all received an invitation for an event taking place on August the 15th at Solano Community College. The Secretary, California Secretary of State, Dr. Shirley Weber is the keynote speaker. And then we have an outstanding panel of young, there'll be four of them. That'll be questions posed of them, and they're just looking forward to it. They're looking forward. So if you can, put it on your calendar. It starts at three o'clock. Oh, and there will be a reception at 2:30. It's not a really meet and greet, but just a reception together prior to going over to the theater. Check your calendar, please. Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Wiley.
I just wanted to say that we had a great time at National Night Out. There were 11 events in District Six. So thanks to the police and the fire and the city coach. I heard great things about all three of those at some of the different city hall, I mean, National Night Outs. So that was a wonderful opportunity for people to talk. At Magnolia Park, it was mentioned during the Chamber of Commerce, we were looking to have more commercial ventures because we have almost residential. So that was just interesting to have the lemonade stand. A big thing I want to say is that school starts next week. We want everyone to be careful, to be vigilant when you're driving, and to just help welcome everyone to the new school, particularly in like District Six, which is Travis School District. There's a lot of turnover at the base at this time of year. And so we'll have a lot of new faces at the schools and in Vacaville. And we have a lot of portables and things that are not quite finished, so hopefully everything will get done in time. And along with school starting, we also talked about part-time and full-time jobs. If anybody knows anyone who's looking for a part-time job, talk to the City Parks and Rec because our TJF program at Foxborough is in question whether we'll have enough workers at the early shift. And parents really depend on having TJF available. So there are jobs available. Please look at Parks and Rec or talk to anyone who might want to help out for a part-time job. And whether it's the school, whether it's neighbors, whether it's the businesses, we want Vacaville to be a welcoming place to all. That's it.
Question?
Yes. Thank you. Vice, Vice Mayor Wiley. The TJF, or maybe I should ask the city manager, is that staffed by us or by Travis School District?
Parks and Rec.
I woke you up?
Give us an update.
Thank you for the question. The TJF program is staffed by city staff. And of course, it's run on school property at times. We have some sites that are on school, school property, some sites that are on park property. That particular site is on park property, but it's schools, it's city staff. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Councilmember Stockton?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to thank all the city staff that participated with National Night Out. Lieutenant Aaron Dahl from the Vacaville Police Department was my Uber driver and got me everywhere I needed to be on time. So I was just very appreciative for the police department offering him to transport me back and forth to all the different locations. I, I really liked this year that they had a centralized location. But I will say that I did not, the one, the one critique that I'm going to give is that I want us all to be together. I felt like Public Works was kind of like off on their own, and they had a really neat display with some new equipment that they have to take care of our city. I, I think that if we, maybe if we, if we moved it down towards downtown, maybe we could involve more of the downtown businesses with National Night Out and fit everybody there with their large equipment and vehicles. Because I don't know if they could get their vehicles up there because they were kind of big. But that being said, I just think it was a wonderful opportunity to get everybody together, right? Neighbors coming out, meeting their neighbors, hanging out, listening to music, cooking hot dogs, kids playing. It was just a wonderful event to see everybody getting along and having a good time. So it was great to be a part of that. And that's it. That's all I got. Great, great news for the biotech. Very excited, very thankful and for the future meeting. I know that I've had a ton of folks reach out related to the Menard Energy Battery Storage Facility project. And the one thing that I just wanted to say out loud is the city is involved in a process, I believe in the city's capability to analyze the project, go through that process. I look forward to that meeting and learning more about the project so that we can determine whether or not it is the right, it is a safe project and the right location for a project like that in our city. But I, but I trust our staff to get to the bottom of some of those very important details. So I wanted to mention that as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Ritchie?
I'll make it quick. National Night Out, a line from old school. I had awesome time. I think the whole town knew I had awesome time at National Night Out. I had the opportunity to carry the tradition of being off for the Hightower, and it was, it was out of control. From the moment I was in the car with Lieutenant Puro and Ms. Puro, I had, people were cracking up downtown, cars pulling up, laughing as they see me trying to be serious in the police car. This going from house to house is exactly what I wanted, to really create community. But so that was awesome. It is what, really the essence of what it was, is really coming together. It was a great opportunity to do that. But be quick on the part, I kind of planned, I knew it was going to be a long meeting. So I pre-recorded my rest of my message and I put it online. So it won't take five minutes, you guys hear me talk about the whole experience of Junior Giants. So I planned ahead. So I think everyone's got Instagram messages. Go online, check it out. It's like a five-minute message about how important it was to support the community through the efforts of Powell. So thank you for everything.
Vice Mayor Wiley?
Just one quick thing, I wanted to tell people that Measure M participated by, we had dollars from our Measure M district dollars to be able to help with the neighbors who were having events. So that was a really great way to use Measure M dollars in the neighborhoods. And I drove around and took pictures of the new lights going in in Arlington Park today and the work being done at Madison Country Park. So I'm glad to see Measure M money is being spent in the neighborhoods.
Thank you. And just lastly, two quick thoughts. One, I had the privilege to celebrate a 100th birthday, and, and that was a week ago Saturday.
You don't look that old.
You like that? Thank you.
That was good.
It's getting late, isn't it? So I just, you just never know who you're going to come across and what a community is all about. And, and so I, representing the city, I just went there and, and was able to share our appreciation, recognition for being a Centurion. But then to sit down and listen to her and all her family flew in from all over the country and to hear the stories about Vacaville and what brought her here. And it was her husband, and it was Travis. And he was a navigator. And to hear the stories of her brother who landed on Normandy. And you just realize there's so much to people. And it was just a special moment. So, you know, to Jackie Chafee, she is 100 years old, she lives in Vacaville, and she had a following. There were hundreds of people at her, at her celebration. And so just to recognize that we walk down streets, we drive down, and we don't really realize what's going on sometimes in the community that we live. And that was a reminder that this is truly a place that can be in community. Wanted to say that. Secondly, Vice Mayor Wiley, I'm not going to repeat what was said, but Vice Mayor Wiley and I did get to experience going out to Travis. And if you're ever wanting to see something exciting, watch the military try to, you know, upstage by flying in planes that are coming to Travis, the KC-46, named Pegasus. And so it will be the replacement for the, for the refueling. It's a, it's a show of an investment into Travis, which I think is healthy for our community. And then before we conclude, we're going to close, but before I do that, because we are going to be going into closed session. And so to make sure that I do this properly, there are four items on closed session, which are some litigation and to discuss performance evaluation, public employment, performance evaluation, yeah, three, three litigations. And I want to make sure that I open up to the public for any comment, so. Saying nobody, I won't close that public comment. And there will be nothing to report out tonight on the closed session, on those four items. If there were, we would make other arrangements to have that released, but there won't be anything tonight. And to, to end our, our lengthy evening, I just wanted to, I said it when it was during the, the beginning, just because of the, the audience. But to adjourn our city council meeting in honor, in memory of Augustine. I knew her, everyone who has ever been around her, just the kind gentleness in her, her nature, her, the spirit within her, she just had a gentleness to her. And whether you would see her anywhere with, with Lynn, she was her own person, though. So don't, never to look at that and say, okay, she was just quiet. No, she had her own mind. And she would tell you what she thought. And, and it was really exciting to see her over the years. And I just, just have real fond memories of when we think of people who were part of service alongside Lynn Augustine and Sue, and she deserves that recognition. So we're going to close tonight's council meeting in honor of Sue. Good night, Vacaville.